We can have this. At this time, we'll have the official call to order and the roll call for the work session for the February 2022 council meeting for the city of Clarkston. We'll start with Vice Mayor Yasu.
President.
Councilman Carroll.
Present.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Present.
Councilwoman Hopkins.
Present.
Councilwoman Yati Bell.
Present.
And Councilwoman Susan Hood.
Present.
Okay, thank you. And we will proceed with the next item, which is the work session, no changes. Resident comment policy. Any member of the public may member of the public may address questions or comments to the city council referencing only agenda items after the mayor and council have had the opportunity to discuss the agenda item. Each attendee will be limited to three minutes for comments. And so just as a matter of housekeeping, I would ask everyone to go ahead and mute your screen at this time. So everyone should mute, press the mute button unless you're a councilperson. Standing. Item four, which is presentations and administrative business, we have none, no old business, and we will move into new business, which is item A, discussion to appoint a new city clerk. City manager, Ms. Cowie.
Madam Mayor. That solicited input and applicants to fill the position of city clerk, I'm sorry. The position of city clerk is vital to the efficient administrative operations of the city of Clarkston and plays a significant role in ensuring continuity of service to the citizens of the city of Clarkston. The city of Clarkston, the mayor and city council, with your approval, shall approve Ms. Tamika Lewis as the appointed city clerk, full-time, permanent position to perform the codified and assigned duties associated with said position. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Cowie. And at this time, we've had a pleasure of working with Ms. Lewis, the council. Do you have any comments? Yes, Vice Mayor Yasu.
Well, I, I just want to say that Ms. Lewis has been doing a great work. She already has been filling in the roles and I'm really looking forward to continue working with her. And thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Hearing none. Ms. Cowie and Ms. Lewis, are we have any comments from the public?
None. Agenda item, Madam Mayor.
With hearing no comments and no additional information from the council, we'll proceed to the next agenda item, which is item B, discussion to appoint a new planning and zoning board member. As you know, Councilwoman Hood used to be on planning and zoning. And so Ms. Cowie, would you please take it away?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The mayor and city council shall review and discuss appointing a new member to the planning and zoning board. Of course, a vacancy became open on the planning and zoning board due to a former board member running for an elected office. We wonder who that could be? And the vacancy permits the mayor and city council to make a recommendation to fill the vacant position on the planning and zoning board, and that position will expire, Madam Mayor and City Council, on December the 31st, 2022. All interested applications to consider were attached to the package. Madam Mayor? And that was Mr. Herbert Clark.
Yes, and we have Mr. Herbert Clark on the line. Mr. Clark, would you like to say a few words to the council? And you can unmute yourself. Go ahead and click that microphone so we can proceed. Mr. Clark? You got it?
Can somebody help Mr. Clark?
I have him now.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening, Mr. Clark. You want to say a few words about why you want to be on planning and zoning?
I want to continue to serve the city of Clarkston and its residents in a more applicable way. To continue my service, I want to make myself available to, to be able to improve our city and to pre-improve the well-being of our, our residents and just want to continue to serve.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Counsel, did you have any comments? And again, if you are not a council member at this time, we want to make sure that you mute your line. Counsel? Yes, Vice Mary Yasu.
I, I appreciate Mr. Clark's volunteer, volunteering to and applying for the position. I'm just curious, is there any other applicant? And I also want to know how long have we advertised this vacancy?
Mr. Vice Mayor, we advertised this vacancy since December, when the vacancy occurred. We did have it advertised on the city's website as well as on, as well as on our social media sites as well. And Mr. Clark's application was the only application that the city received.
Any other questions from the council?
I have a second thing. Mr. Clark for applying as well, I believe he still wants to serve the city.
And you may want to change the naming on your, on your, it doesn't have your name on there. And did we have anyone signed up to say for that, for this particular item?
Only Mr. Clark, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. With no other comments from the council or the community, we will proceed with item C, which is a discussion to reappoint Dean Moore to the Clarkston Historic Preservation Committee. And it's Moore to reappoint for that position. City manager, Ms. Cowie.
Yes, Madam Mayor. This item is to reappoint a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. The Historic Preservation shall consist of three members, two members appointed by the city council and one appointed by the mayor. All members shall be residents of Clarkston and members shall serve three, three-year terms. Members may not serve more than two consecutive terms. And initial appointments are one member for one year to be appointed by the mayor, again, and one member for two years appointed by the city council, and one member for three years appointed by city council. The mayor has appointed the one-year term that has been extended to the three-years term, and that was Mr. Ashton Walker. The city council shall review to discuss the reappointment of the member of the initial two-year terms to the three-year term. The initial three-year term is slated to expire in July of 2022. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Cowie. And Mr. Moore, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we'll give you an opportunity to talk about why you want to be reappointed.
Well, it's, it's a work in progress. We're trying to nail this down and get the word out to the, to the public what we've discussed on the, in the few meetings that we have had during this pandemic and what historic preservation is all about. So I'd like to continue preserving Clarkston for future, well, present and future residents to preserve the bucolic atmosphere that we have here.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Moore. Counsel, did you have any comments at this time?
I don't see anything. I just see my name. I just see the, the
Have to mute.
Very much with the
Yes, Vice Mary Yasu.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, I definitely first want to thank the continuous commitment from former council member Moore. And I just want to say thank you to him. And I also would like to ask if there is any other applicant besides him and how long has, have we advertised the, the, the position?
The position for historic preservation did go out to the public as well, Councilmember Yasu, Vice Mayor. However, again, the slated position was a term that was already being held by Mr. Moore and other members of the Historic Preservation Commission and their work that they are continuously doing. So this is an extension of the appointment that he had already received. And the three-year term is the extension of the second member of the Historic Preservation Commission for the two-year, for the three-years term. I'm sorry. Ms. Hopkins.
I Oh, I'm question, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Um, I'm just wondering, I think Ms. Cowie said that the term expires in July. So I'm curious if his current term expires in July and then we're rolling it over for another three years. Why are we doing it in January?
No, actually, that, the two-year term did expire in July of 2021.
Okay.
We're here for appointment for this, for this meeting. The three-year term will expire in July of 2022.
Okay. And again, I would like to thank Dean Moore for all of the work that he does for the city and his constant diligence and dedication to Clarkston. That's all.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the council?
The only other question I had is, so is this Dean's second term? Because I think the rules allow for two consecutive terms, but not three. Would this be the second term if he's reappointed?
The second term.
Okay.
The initial terms for all members were on a one, two, three-year basis. The appointment of the one-year term has already been done last year by the mayor. This is the two-year term that extends until three years, and then the three-year term will be a three-year term.
My number is 419-525.
Sorry about that.
Yes, Vice Mary Yasu.
I just got a quick question. So, so if I'm not mistaken, so why are we doing it? I mean, since he already is appointed for two years, do we have to do it every, every year? Even though he, his, his term has not expired?
It's been two years.
Term has expired.
He took when I was elected.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that.
There you go. Any other questions from the council? Hearing none, we'll proceed. But I want to make sure just for administrative purposes, for item A, is that fine for the council to have as consent agenda?
Item A.
Okay. Item A, which is the clerk. Is that okay?
I would agree both A and B, I would say.
Okay, A and B, A and B. We'll do A and B. It sounds like C will be a part of the agenda. Is that what I'm hearing? Or you want to be, have that as C needs to be consent as well, if that's the way we can do it.
Well, we haven't talked about it. That's why I didn't want to mention it.
We're talking about it now. So do you have any more comments? And the public, Ms. Cowie, did we have any comments from the public?
The, no, Madam Mayor.
Okay, hearing no comments from the public, and we've had discussion from the council. Do we proceed with this item as in the consent item?
Yes, I think we should do A.
Outstanding. Thank you. With that being said, we will close this item and move on to D, which is the discussion of an alcohol alliance, a license for Olympic Cafe, DBA Abyssinia Cafe and Restaurant at 926 Montreal Road, Suite 3E, Clarkston, Georgia 30021. City manager, Ms. Cowie.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The Alcohol Review Committee has received and reviewed an ownership change alcohol license for this location. The new owner of Abyssinia Cafe and Restaurant has made application for alcohol beverage license for beer, wine, malt, and beverages, beer, wine, malt beverages sales. All required inspections have been performed and the required background check has passed. The city's co-compliance officer has reviewed the application and has measured the location and found it does meet minimum distances as defined by the code. The ARC, the Alcohol Review Committee, has performed a thorough review of the various components of this application. Under Clarkson Code, Section 3-53, the city council is vested with the full authority to grant an alcohol license. Madam Mayor.
Ms. Cowie, and just for clarification, this is simply a transfer and not a new license correct, license request. Okay. With that being said, we have the applicant, is the applicant on the line at this time?
Mr. Ali. Don't see him on the line, Madam Mayor.
Counsel, did you have any questions? And again, this is simply a transfer of an existing license. This is not a new license. Yes, Councilwoman Hopkins and then Vice Mary Yasu.
If we're in agreement, could that go on a consent agenda as well, or does that have to be done?
Yeah. In the swing of this, aren't you? Okay.
I would, I would agree with putting this in the consent agenda as well.
Vice Mary Yasu.
I just got a quick question, a follow-up on what you said. I thought always alcohol license, doesn't matter whether it is, whenever it's a new applicant, it's considered a new application, not a transfer, I believe, right?
Well, the transfer of the license is correct, as Madam Mayor states. New ownership does warrant a new review by the ARC committee, and we present that information to mayor and city council.
Okay, all right, I got you. But this is for, for on-premises consumption. So this is not yeah, okay, I got you. Thank you.
For that clarity. And with that being said, we'll ask the public, Ms. Cowie, do we have any comments from the public?
No comments for item D, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. With no comments and the consent of the council and consensus of the council, this item will also be considered for consent agenda. Is that okay with everyone? Outstanding. We'll move on to item E, which is the discussion of an alcohol license for the, the Luggabro, I'm sorry if I said it wrong, LLC DBA Chevron Food Mark at 1109 Montreal Road, Clarkston, Georgia 30021. City manager, Ms. Cowie.
Madam Mayor, the Alcohol Review Committee has also reviewed and reviewed this application and ownership change for alcohol license at this location. The new owner of the Chevron Food Mark located at 1109 Montreal Road has made application for alcohol beverage license for beer, wine, malt beverages sales. All required inspections have been performed and the required background check has passed. The city's co-compliance officer has reviewed the application and has measured the location and found that it does meet the minimum distance requirements as defined by code. The, the ARC has performed a thorough review of the various components of this application. And under Clarkson Code, Section 3-53, the city council is vested with the final authority to grant an alcohol license. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Cowie. And Ms. Cowie, do we have the applicants on the line?
Yes, and their representative, Ms. Farkas, is on the line.
Good evening, Ms. Farkas. Would you like to have a moment to say a few words?
Good afternoon or good evening. Thank you very much. Yes, we've been anticipating this meeting for quite some time. We're completely ready. My client has tons of experience in this business and the store is ready. We've already got our business license, so we're operating. We just don't have alcohol yet. And my client is here, Rashawn is here, if you'd like to speak to him.
Hi, Mr. Rashawn, would you like to speak at this time?
Hey, everybody. Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
It's good to see you all, yeah. It's nice. We, we finally get, get together after New Year. And I, I hope everybody's, New Year's going well. And then, yeah, we, I'm very excited to have a new license coming in in the store. And I've been in the city of Clarkston since 2009. And then I'm residing right now in the city of Lisbon, but I'm doing my business since 2015 in the city of Clarkston. So like, like Frank says, that we are very experienced and we know what we're doing over there. So I'll, I'll be really appreciative if we get our license on time and we can, you know, serve fully in the city of Clarkston. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're very excited to welcome you into our city. Thank you for considering us, and we're looking forward to that. Counsel, at this time, did you have any comments? Vice Mary Yasu?
I, I got a couple of questions. So is this also a transfer to a new owner or?
This is ownership change as well.
Okay. And the other question is, you, you mentioned that, that the, the place, I know it probably was grandfathered, but you said that it does meet the distance requirement, but isn't there a church right behind it?
Yes, and of course, as the, again, it is a grandfathered location that had an alcohol license during the time that the church was in existence with that current location.
Thank you for bringing those points up. Counsel, did you have any additional questions? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Cowie, did we have anyone signed up for this agenda item?
No, ma'am. The speakers for this item, Ted Spohke.
Outstanding. So with that being said, would this be also something we consider for consent?
I would agree with putting this in the consent agenda.
I just I disagree.
Okay. Okay, and that's why we have this discussion now. So this one will be something where we have a vote. Thank you for your input, counsel. With that being said, we'll close this item and move on to G, which is a discussion to allocate 30,000 in ARPA funds to the Healthy Community Clarkston Outreach Initiative submitted by the Veterans and Community Outreach Foundation. And I know between me and Councilwoman Johnson, we'll talk about this, but yes, Ms. Farkas, yes.
Two things. I think you skipped the next application, which is also my client.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you for saying that.
But also, I don't understand what just happened about it needs to have a vote, and, but then you went on. So could you tell me what's happening there?
So just for clarity, and thank you. So one of the things that we're trying to do as a council is to be efficient in terms of what we vote on, what we spend our time on. And we're using some procedural, parliamentary procedures where we do consent agenda. And so consent agenda allows, if all the council members agree that they want to have this and just go ahead and approve it, it goes into a group and we say we approve this group of items at one time. Now, if we don't have consensus, we still discuss the item at the council meeting and we vote on it at the council meeting. Okay? So we're going to go through the normal process of what we would do is read the agenda item at the council meeting. We would discuss and then, you know, have the motion and vote on it. So it will go through the same process.
Could I ask what the, what the reason is that you're not willing to put it on the consent agenda? If this is a discussion meeting?
Well, it's, as far as the council, that's the discretion of the council members to do. And so if a council member says that they don't want to do it, then they don't have to do it. And so in terms of any further discussion, that is pretty much where we go with it. And I'm going to make sure in terms of any council member has the right to say that they don't want to have something on their consent agenda, and that's their pleasure, period.
I was just wondering what the reason was, if that was to be known. And does that mean we need to come to another meeting and have like a discussion? Tell you, do we need to have a presentation of some sort?
Have to have a presentation. But again, the council member, if the council member says they don't want to have to do it, then the council member doesn't have to do it.
I understand that. I just wondered if there was a reason for it, other than just, I don't want to. I mean, it was, is there some
Well, he doesn't
question for this application or?
Thank you. But again, he doesn't have to state that. And that's, that's the point. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the next agenda item, and thank you for that clarification. We'll go to item D, which is the discussion of alcohol license for Sam, I mean, I just want to make sure I don't say that wrong. Ms. Cowie, how do you pronounce that? I don't want to say it incorrectly. Ms. Cowie.
I couldn't, there you go. I couldn't hear you, Madam Mayor.
It's Samia Investment Incorporated, DBA Chevron Food Mark at 3635 Church Street, Clarkston, Georgia 30021.
They said that they were on the agenda, Madam Mayor. This is for F.
Yes, yeah. Yes. Yes. So if you, you go through that process for F.
Say you can unmute yourself. They did sign up to speak, Madam Mayor.
You do the intro? Yeah, can you do the
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. That's the piece I need you to do. Thank you, Ms. Cowie.
The Alcohol Review Committee has received and reviewed an ownership change application for a convenience store locate to, to sell beer, wine, and malt beverages at the above location. The new owners of the Chevron Food Mark has made application for an alcohol beverage license. Again, all required inspections have been performed and the required background check has passed. The city's co-compliance officer has reviewed the application and has measured the location and found it does meet minimum distances as defined by the code. The ARC has performed a thorough review of the various components of this application. And under Clarkson Code, Section 3-53, the city council is vested with the final authority to grant an alcohol license. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Cowie. And Ms. Farkas, now you have a chance to speak on this one and your client as well.
Thank you again. Again, this is a change of ownership. There's already been a license there, and we're just taking over the store, new tenant. And my client, Janesh, has got lots of experience working with inconvenience stores and owning them, either managing them for other people or owning them himself. He is not from this country, so his, his English is not so great. So just let him speak slowly if you want to ask him some questions. He does have the answers. He just may be a little harder to understand than most. He's kind of got a heavy accent.
Your client's name again?
Janesh.
Janesh. Mr. Janesh, we'd like to hear from you.
Hopefully, he can figure out how to unmute the
The 419?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. 419-525, you got your chance to speak now. You can unmute your phone. There we go.
Yes, ma'am. My name, good, good evening and I hope you see, I hope you guys see, you are, you are doing fine. I've been working in a convenience store since 2000, and I have a lot of experience. All my, I train my, all my employees, like if somebody wants to come to buy beer or tobacco, my register will tell you, like you are 21 years old or not. Check my ID regularly. If you don't have ID, we don't give no ID on the phone or nothing, personal ID. You match the ID, then we will give the beer or wine. So I hope you will get the license soon as, as soon as possible. Any other question from you guys?
Counsel, do you have any questions or any questions for the applicant? Hearing none. Did we have any? Hearing none. Did we have anyone from the community? No, ma'am. Okay, with that being said, will this one be on the consent agenda? Yes or no?
Yes.
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 Yes, so this one will go on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
We appreciate you too. And so we'll we'll go ahead and take care of that in the next council me at the council meeting. Okay? Outstanding. So now we'll go to to G, which is the discussion to allocate thirty thousand in ARPA funds to the Healthy Community Clarkston Outreach Initiative submitted by the Veterans and Community Outreach Foundation Incorporated. And again, this was something last year that the group presented to the council. And we are following up with that. And Mr. Johnson, would you like to speak at this time?
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Johnson.
Hey, Madam Mayor, City Council Members, City of Clarkston. As the Veterans Community Outreach, we have been really busy with this community this year. But we want to launch this Healthy Veterans Clarkston Services Outreach Initiative. And it's it's about our veterans. It's a lot of veterans right now on the break. So we want to make sure that we are we are on the front lines here in Clarkson. We have over two hundred veterans here in Clarkson. Uh, the families, also families of Clark, uh, veterans and here in Clarkson in the area. And we have fifty veterans directly that we are working with with the Clarkson First Baptist Church. We also have been been doing a system with these veterans in in military branches, for all military branches. Their families, family members. And some of those that are first responders that have have already went to over overseas to to Afghanistan. So we're still working with those, those that are coming home. Also, we are helping those of veterans right now that who who is homeless and have have on the street streets and and into, we want to try to help them get into housing. We're also supporting the the healthy initiative, well-being of veterans and their families, providing with the food and assistance through health healthcare, through assisting the VA and their earned benefits. So we we want to make sure we get them some some help in this time of pandemic. Uh, the population is is of the family is underserved right now. And they're receiving fewer health health service care, the VA classes because of mental health. The other without food daycare in a geographical area here in Clarkson because of COVID pandemic. And we also additional is going to assist those veterans in having having been lost in the system to have some Zoom meetings and also some face-to-face or person-to-person. Those are those are things that we're 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 targeting right now, and we're working with, we've been working with on the days that we have already been allotted to work with them round last year. So I'm hoping that Clarkson can help us to get get this this program started and move it forward. We really have, we really have done some things to help these people that are coming in with us today. So thank you.
And Mr. Johnson, this is for year program, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and thank you. I want to first say thank you to you and your organization. Since you've come to Clarkston and started meeting, you have been truly involved. You've been participating at the food distribution, at different activities, being extremely supportive and being there for our community. And I'm grateful that you are trying to be there for a community that we really have not touched upon, which are our veterans. And so counsel, at this time, did you have any questions for Mr. Johnson? I know that he is going to follow up with an M O U with what he just described in terms of the services in detail for us. Vice Mayor Yasu?
Well, I think you beat me to it. I was just going to ask you about that. I was going to ask him about that. I definitely want to, I appreciate what he's been doing and what for all the services that veterans did in the past and that that they always do. And I just want to make sure they have a clear, a clear plan on how they're going to spend the money. And I really am interested on seeing the M O U. I I wish it was already presented at the work session. And so that we could, we could see, you know, the parameters of it. So I'll be willing to discuss it further at the council meeting. Hopefully, we get the M O U sooner. If not, we could definitely see next month if we can table it until we have the M O U and we kind of have a clear understanding how that money is going to be spent.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and Councilwoman Bill.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. I think that you had great work, but I also know that thirty thousand dollars is not a lot for a growing need on that we're seeing in our community. And so to Vice Mayor Yasu's point, it would be great to see the exact programs that you're gonna focus, center, and target the veterans in Clarkson in particular, as well as what services and partnerships that you're going to have, whether that's a part of the M O U or supplemental documents. So we can have ability to review prior to the meeting if possible. And then also any evaluation or report out that you're going to give us on the effectiveness of the thirty thousand dollars to our particular community here in Clarkson would be helpful as well.
Councilwoman Bill and Councilwoman Hood.
Yes, I want to add my appreciation to your efforts to support veterans. It's very important in this country that we recognize the value that veterans continue to have to our community. So I'll just add to what has been said about the need for a specific identification of what you will be doing with the funds, how you will determine the costs and what you expect the outcome to be, et cetera. When the city grants public money to an entity, one of the things that we're responsible for is making sure that that entity is able to put those funds to good use. And so part of the review that we would be looking at is what your experience when you have received other grants or other donations, that sort of thing. Because that helps us understand your situation as far as can you this money and you need additional help from the standpoint of putting anything together administratively or whatever. So I hope that at our council meeting, we'll have the opportunity to learn more about your track record, about your short and long-term plans and how that works with our city. Again, thank you very much for your doing.
Oh, was that for me? I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't hear you. Okay. Um, yeah, I'm looking at the item on the agenda, and I have a little bit of a concern because the, well, the I I have to look sideways, I'm sorry, but the itemized list is speaking specifically addressing health fairs and food drives, all of which would, you know, clearly be within the domain of ARPA funds. But the actual item that it's written up, the main cover page says the need or impact is the Veterans and Community Outreach is seeking assistance to fund outreach such as men's think tank, women's think tank, including Veterans Day Ceremony, Veterans Memorial Service. And those things specifically, although we might want to fund them under a different thing, but would not fit under ARPA. Although, when you look down under the itemized, they would. So maybe some clarity on that for the, you know, for requesting specifically ARPA funds to only include things in the request that would meet approval for ARPA funds, rather than, you know, a Veterans Day Ceremony. Because that's definitely maybe something we want to do, but not something we want to try and put through on federal funds for ARPA.
And thank you for that. And I think Mr. Johnson will make sure he'll clean that up in terms of what he presents to the council. Councilwoman Bill?
And so, Mr. Johnson, I just want to be clear what I'm looking for. I'm looking for how you define a success and what that metric looks like, as well as what particular program. So if it's one or two programs that, you know, this grant will impact, I know that you have all these things here, you want to do a lot of things. But what are those focal areas that you're trying to tackle for the veterans in Clarkson? And how are you going to go about doing that, as well as if staff capacity is also going to be one component of utilizing this fund? So I just want to know, like, logistically, is this enough? Will it be effective? And how you use it, and then how we define a success?
That that's her comment. If you want to comment on that, if you if you might, if you want to, Mr. Johnson, you can.
Well, very much. These these are still programs that's ongoing. And we we will be partnering with with other, what you call organization that that handles a lot of the, lot of the hands-on. So I think that we're we're strictly trying to target all veterans. During the pandemic, some of them couldn't pay their rent. They had kids in their house. They 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 had heaters that was off. You know, stuff like that, you know. I live here in Clarkson. I I brought two veterans to to the city to to get bills paid, you know? Because we haven't had a raise in fifteen years. So we understand what what you're saying about the financial part of it. But we need to get something started so they can they can trust the community and be part of the community, because they've been out there working. They've been helping the community to 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 feed the others that 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 are here in the community. We don't, we don't just ask for handouts. We we'll work, we'll work for what we have to do. And and that's something, that's something that's that's been in us ever since we've been in the service.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I think Vice Mayor, you had a comment?
I think I had kind of similar concern as Councilmember Hopkins brought. I was just looking at the at the description of some of the tentative expenses. And some of it definitely is not going to lie on the, like, security and safety expense. I mean,
Yeah, he's not going to include that part.
Yeah, I mean, and there are certain things that are probably that you can always, regardless of this funding, that is like things like tents and stuff. You can always reach out to our city manager. If you always need things like chairs and stuff, I'm pretty sure that she would be more than happy to help with.
We'll have you, we'll have your M O U on on just the veterans. We're working with just veterans and and their families and trying to get them them straight now, because it is a pandemic we're in right now. So that's that's where we at.
Thank you, and Ms. Councilwoman Johnson. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to add to what Mr. Johnson, as well as other council members have said. Mr. Johnson and his veterans have really been there for this community. For my food drives, and I say my because I take it personal, but for the food drives that I had the pleasure of having for our community, not to throw stones at anybody, but I could rely on those veterans when I didn't even see a council member. And when we had things like health fairs with Georgia State, they were there. If it wasn't nothing but parking. So I I I do understand that Mr. Johnson and his organization presented these documents several months ago. If I'm not mistaken, it may have been the end of twenty twenty. I'm not sure. So to come back to us, I think that he was just trying to present something. So I think with Mr. Johnson can take this information that we've all given him and put together M O U, because I've seen a partial calendar that the veterans have came up with. And I've talked to several of them that are very excited about what's coming down the pipe and that this particular item actually came back to us after what they call being ignored for over a year during a pandemic. And after talking to Mr. Johnson, I was, he he did inform me that it was a little nerve-wracking to have such an extensive presentation. And none of us, including myself, well, I I take that back. Me and the mayor did reach out to see what we could do to assist, because at that time, they were asking for sixty thousand dollars. So once he got to calibrate, thanks to Councilwoman Hopkins, he tallied up the homeless veterans in our area. And then he got the proclamation for Veterans Day, and he still took it upon himself to do a very nice celebration that the mayor had the pleasure of attending. So I think the effort is definitely there. The M O U will break down the structure of the program. But I think that the services that the veterans have offered in the past and will contribute going forward is well-needed in our community. Because the veterans have been overlooked. So, Mr. Johnson, I take the the information from council and put it to use on your M O U, and I look forward to and what we can do to assist you and the veterans here in Clarkson.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman John, I mean Hopkins. You're on mute.
I would, we're two years in. I still don't have it right. I would just like to point out that to Mr. Johnson, that even though like, as a city, we have more than one source of funding. And as an applicant, he has more than one opportunity to put in an application. But what goes on that application has got to be specific to the source of funding. So it's not an all or nothing thing. If you put forward an M O U and there's things on there we can't approve, that doesn't mean you can't turn in that application three months later if it's not ARPA, but it's something we could do out of general fund. So I just want to make that clear, that it can it can be broken up. It doesn't all have to come in one grant, and it doesn't, clearly doesn't all have to come out of ARPA. But just if it's a request for money from ARPA, make sure it qualifies for ARPA, which means it's very specifically COVID-related or related, yeah, people losing their, some people losing their homes, whatever, from COVID and other celebrations, you know, we might be on board. It's just a different application, and it would come in a different. That's all.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Yasu?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I also just want to bring up to the attention of our city attorney. If you could weigh on this so that he can, so that, I mean, Mr. Johnson can also hear what are the legal parameters that that he need to consider when when while preparing the the M O U so that it will be a lot clearer for him. I just want to hear from our city attorney.
Sure, sure, Mr. Vice Mayor. Well, I think the key is that while assisting veterans in general is very much a laudable undertaking, that as Councilmember Hopkins said, we have to use the ARPA fund for ARPA purposes. And the ARPA is not a veterans assistance bill. It's a COVID assistance bill. So we need to use the funds in a way that addresses problems created by the pandemic. So, you know, the main categories are assisting directly with COVID prevention and treatment. So if veterans are suffering from COVID, or we want to get them the vaccine, then that would be totally appropriate. The second category is assisting with the economic impacts of COVID. Um, the second category is assisting with the economic impacts of COVID. So if a veteran lost their job or home or. Any kind of negative economic impact that's related to the pandemic, then that would be. There's lots of ways uh that are eligible to address that. And then the third main category is like trying to. Create a situation that will reduce the transmission of COVID. So that I I believe one of the things he mentioned was uh meeting by Zoom rather than in person and. And so like funding that I think would be a a legitimate ARPA expenditure. Um, so I don't want to try, I I don't mean to give an exhaustive list. Those are just the categories.
And thank you, Mr. Quinn, for that clarity. So, thank you, Council, for all the input that you gave and the requests that you had for Mr. Johnson to go back. And make the corrections for the document that you would like to see and discuss for council meeting. If that's not enough time, once you have the document, again, we can table this until you have adequate time to review. And have the appropriate information you need. So with that being said, I see Councilwoman Hopkins and then Vice Mayor Yasu, take it away.
I just had one uh legal question for Mr. Quinn about the possibility of. Us granting funds for this Veterans Association and there being like duplication of benefits. For example, if the recipient has received funds through the city for rental assistance and utility assistance. And then also does it again through this veterans organization. But the only people that are, you know, eligible to qualify for that one are veterans. Could we run into legal problems for that?
Um, you you. You mean by targeting the relief to veterans as a subcategory of people that are impacted by COVID? Um, I don't think so. I mean, that, you know, each program can only help so many people. And so if if we want to, for for one particular program, target a subgroup, I think that's fine. As long as that subgroup is completely within the larger group of folks impacted by COVID. So if that circle, where where that circle uh goes outside of the COVID circle. So where there are doubtlessly veterans that have not been impacted by COVID, then they would not, they should not receive the benefit. Um, but I think the fact that this particular program would not go to other COVID impacted people. I I'm not aware of any, I think it's a good question, but I'm not aware of anything that would stop us from administering a a portion of our funds that way.
But but would there be a problem with um duplication of benefits that some people have received? A benefit that has a, you know, the fiscal limit through the city.
So that's, that's a city, uh, that's a decision that the city made about what's the fair and right way to divvy up our funds. And so I think that I would have to um toss that question back to the council. And ask you as a matter of policy, does that bother you or not? I I do not think that it would be a legal problem.
Actually, some of the applications that have been submitted with MOUs for the city. Have provided services or resources that have been duplicates of the line items that city and mayor, city council have allocated for assistance. So some of the entities that we are providing funds for are actually providing services that we are providing um as well.
So that's the situation we already have, basically. Okay, all right. That's a good question. Thank you, Councilwoman Hopkins and Vice Mayor Yasu.
But uh, I also want to pick up on this uh first. I think uh I'm totally okay with um veterans or any other group. As long as they're needy, I think um uh it's totally fine. Um, but uh, I I think um. What I was going to say is I actually want to encourage uh Mr. Johnson that we definitely want them to make sure that. All the help is there so that they can always get the help. There are a lot of. Resources that we have that right now that are not being utilized, including like mortgage assistance. So I really want to encourage them um uh also to make sure that uh to always reach out to our city manager. And see if there is even on top of the assistance that they will get, um, considering that they will get in the in in our next work work council meeting. So they definitely um um, they definitely can always uh apply for. The benefits. There are a lot of benefits, including like um utility assistance that is not being utilized by. By our residents and uh some of it is lack of knowledge. So I want to encourage uh Mr. Johnson. To to help us with getting this information out there so that. Our veterans can definitely get all the benefits and also their relatives and family members, their neighbors. Can also utilize this uh benefits, uh particularly mortgage assistance and also. Uh, utility payments assistance have been one of the least utilized ones. So please um. Feel free to always reach out to our city manager if you come across a veteran or even his relatives who live in the city limits. As long as they sit, they live in our city, uh, I think we will definitely always help them. Thank you.
And Councilwoman Bill.
Yeah, that's all I'm gonna say on this measure. Uh, Mr. Johnson, is that you are a veteran and you have served our country and the folks that you're. Um, providing a service for him as well. And so we appreciate, I appreciate that. I can't speak for everybody else, but I do. And I also know that during the pandemic, a lot of y'all became caregivers and a lot of y'all are now having more children at home, maybe due to circumstances or. Uh, families combined and household due to the pandemic went and just lost the things. And so that's why I was asking the question about how you define success for this program, as well as what particular programs you want you want to dive into. Um, so I think I'm sure that y'all are going to have a good proposal. I look forward to uh reading it and helping y'all ensure that we. Uh, take care of more veterans despite if you duplicate the services, um, or you receive more benefits in our city or not. I know that you're on a fixing call and so I know that you're using all your resources um just to live every day.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bill.
Yes.
To you, um, Madam Mayor, that we will work with the initiative from Mr. Johnson and make sure that the information that you all have requested. Um, will be presented to you in a timely manner and and also to help Mr. Um, Johnson understand that if we can't collectively get that information to you in a timely manner. That we will present it to you with enough time for it to be researched and reviewed by each and every one of you.
Outstanding. And thank you. Um, thank you, Council, for all your feedback and comments. I think. Um, Mr. Johnson will take all of that and we're looking for a wonderful proposal because again. We are grateful for the service that our veterans have provided us. And we're looking forward to how we as a city can continue to support our community. And with that being said, Ms. Cowie, do we have any council, any community members who wanted to speak on this particular item?
Actually, Madam Mayor, Mr. Moore did want to speak on this item, or and Mr. Clark. Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore. Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't uh sign up to comment on this.
Oh, it said we have you down for all items, Mr. Moore.
Uh, yes, and that would be at my discretion. I would raise my hand on the items that I wish to speak on.
Uh, understood. Thank you.
Thank you. And so we'll move on to Mr. Clark. You can unmute yourself, Mr. Clark. Click on that beautiful microphone at the bottom. There you go, Mr. Clark. Yes, we can.
Uh, I had the op- uh, I also had the opportunity to work with Mr. Johnson uh. Uh, at different venues. He's particularly their food program. Also, uh, he worked with the programs to uh in the medical uh arena, you know, for testing. Uh, and when they came out to do uh certain tests, uh, he was also involved in that. So the veterans of of, since I've known Mr. Johnson has had boots on the ground. To do certain things in the community that were ready, willing and able to do it. So I believe if we can do anything to help them continue a program, which I think is vital. With all the, all our veterans have done uh for our country. And then any uh, it may seem small, but there's nothing small in the way of uh helping someone. Uh, so I'm in very much uh in favor of anything that we can do to further to help. Our veterans uh in our city. Now the amount, I don't know anything about the bookkeeping part of the amount or the MOUs. But I do believe that we need to stretch our hands. And stretch our arms with love and do something for the veterans uh by the way of Mr. Johnson, who is spearheading the program. Thank you.
Clark, I really appreciate your comment. Uh, Mr. Moore, I think you said you didn't want to make a comment, but I see a raised hand, so I'm a little confused at this time.
Uh, yes, I I have raised my hand. Um, I just wanted to mention that I think uh, I mean, I agree with Mr. Clark. But I want to compliment the council on um basically asking the right questions and helping with this whole procedure. In uh making sure that we are not uh running afoul of the uh. Of the federal guidelines for this funding. So thank you for asking all the right questions and and going in the right direction on this.
Okay, and I'm glad you changed your mind. Thank you very much. Okay, with that being said, are there any other comments at this time? Hearing none, thank you for a very lively discussion and we have a lot of work to do and getting it to what we need. And again, if you are not a council member, we would love to make sure that you mute your line. Thank you all. So we'll move on to item I, which is a discussion of the splo- no, I'm sorry, uh, H. Discussion to allocate ARPA funds to offer Clarkston homeowners assistance with home repairs. And weatherization not to exceed five thousand dollars for each household, Councilwoman Johnson. You're on mute. There we go. My, I don't have an item. You said Councilwoman Johnson? Weatherization? Oh, 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 I'm so sorry. Okay, I'm so sorry. Basically, what I wanted to do is offer our homeowners um here in the city of Clarkston an opportunity. To make repairs to their homes that they may not have been able to make during the pandemic. Whether it's gutters, windows, um, the heat may have gone out. This um, I wanted counsel to actually help me come up with a maximum amount per household. And um, city manager Cowie to assist me with the qualifications and um requirements. And basically, I just didn't want anyone's home to be neglected during the pandemic because we're all trying to reserve our finances. Because we don't know what the pandemic has to offer, uh, how long it's going to be going on. So to have to go buy five new windows because. You're just getting air. We just wanted to offer something to our community to show you that um we see you. We we have some of the same problems you have. And the only op- the only thing about this program is that you have to have directly been impacted by COVID. Or had a COVID deficit during this time. So I'm open for my teammates. To chime in and let me know what we can do or how we, I need to tweak this or what we can do to assist um the community. Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. And thank you for bringing these points up. Before we go, uh, Ms. Cowie. Um, in terms of weatherization in ARPA, would you expound on that just a little bit in terms of that category? I don't know if that's you or Mr. Quinn. And you're on mute.
That is actually a line item that can be used for um ARPA funds, Madam Mayor. Um, in response to the um pandemic on households and communities. Um, home repair and home weatherization programs are an acceptable use for um ARPA funding. And um, the city attorney can also elaborate on that as well. But when we reviewed the uh interim rule for um ARPA funding, um, home repair and home weatherization programs. Were a um resource for um allocation of funds.
Mm hmm. It in, in fact, um. This falls under the category of um. Um, infrastructure. The, it's one of the categories that was in the ARPA law, but not in the CARES law. So under ARPA, the home weatherization and home repair. As well as another prominent example is like uh stormwater systems. So you don't, in these instances, it's not even tied to like a specific COVID impact. Like, for example, that is unrelated to stormwater, but it's just included in the law as something that the local governments can use their money on.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Yasu and then Councilwoman Bill.
All right, thank you. I I certainly um. Think the the idea is great. The the only concern I have is the implementation of it. Um, so is this going to be on refund basis? Is this going to be on? Uh, you give them the money and then they do it and they show you the proof. I mean, there is a lot of details on this that really is going to be um, have to be uh clarified because um. I think the idea is great and I'm glad that uh it can be uh, it's a legitimate usage of um ARPA. Um, and the other thing I'm not exactly sure is um uh. On terms of the limit. So if we say five thousand per household, um. And we try and stretch it and help as many as we can, um, that that's where I. I would really see um probably we need probably to reduce the amount so that we can help more people. Uh, and so there's a a few things I really I'm not sure how it's going to be implemented. Is this going to be implemented by our, is this going to be on refund basis or is this going to be on? So those are the few questions that I really I'm not sure how it will work.
Thank you for your comment, uh, Councilwoman Bill.
Oh, but um, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Johnson, if you wanted to respond. Yes, ma'am. Well, according to ARPA guidelines, we, they have to have a license contracted. And um, I did speak to Ms. Cowie and she's on the line. She can um comment. Um, I asked her would this put a strain on um personnel? And she said that it would not. And in the event that it did, ARPA also allows us to pay somebody to help us do things like this. So. Um, that wouldn't be an issue, but the the, one of the things that they did tell me personally is that um. We don't give the money to the homeowner. The money goes to the contractor and the contractor has to be licensed. Um, so Ms. Cowie, am I saying that correctly?
If those are the stipulations.
Okay.
That set forth in your requirements for um homeowners who will receive. Um, these ARPA funds for home repairs and weatherization. Again, we have to work um together and collaborate on what actually is a viable home repair. Or a viable um weatherization project. Um, some projects do cost more than others. So it will depend on how we will determine um the funding, again, is the funding amount. The maximum for each homeowner in the city of Clarkston and um how we will allocate those funds. So again, this is a work in progress. Um, and we're setting those parameters and um. Just like um Vice Mayor Yasu said, is this a refund basis or do we? is this a refund basis or do we expect them to um um present a project, complete the project and get reimbursed by the city? Or we pay a contractor or directly to the homeowner for these um services to be paid?
Outstanding. Thank you. And so uh, oh, go ahead, Mr. Quinn. I'm sorry.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just going to offer a suggestion of one possible way to tackle this um would be to put out a bid for weatherization licensed contractor, for example.
I get it.
Then, and that would be a way to sort of leverage the buying power of doing a number of these projects throughout the city. So if a, if a contractor knew that he was not just bidding on one job, but twenty or whatever, he might give a better price to the city, which would make our dollars go further. And it would also, I think, aid in the implementation because the contractual relationship would be between the city, who has the ARPA funds, and the contractor, who would be very um familiar and uh practiced in providing the documentation so that you would have on one end homeowners applying to the city. And then the output of that would be from the city to the uh successful bidder that, okay, here are your twenty approved projects to go do and uh bring us back the invoices to get paid.
Thank you for that wonderful idea. So Councilwoman Bell?
Yeah, so I'll just add, um, thank you, uh, Councilmember Johnson for bringing this to us. I think that weatherization um helps uh homeowners who's spending majority of their time at home now due to the pandemic, um, reduce some of their, our energy usage as also the utility bills and helps keep them safe during this pandemic where they're spending majority of their time. I think with the contractor, um Attorney Quinn, I think that's a great idea. The only caveat that I will put is that um I hope that we will ensure that we have uh minority contractors um to take place in that bidding process because sometimes we don't get as many of them as I would like um personally and as an elected official that serves a diverse community um would like to see. And so that is definitely uh an option, I think, is also one of my recommendations that they um do some type of application process. The other thing is, I just want everybody to note that it says the funds in the amount not to exceed five thousand. So some people may have expenses that, you know, a couple of hundred dollars, some maybe a thousand. So I don't know if we need to reduce the amount. I think we need to figure out what we have and even may revisit it again if we need to increase it. But I don't know about you, a water heater, pipe busting, all those things of labor and time. They can get very expensive quickly. So I want to make sure that we have enough resources to really help people um that, you know, rooms are flooding, it's not livable, asbestos, and you know, the list of things goes on. But I think it's a good um measure to.
Councilwoman Bell and um Councilman Carol, and then Councilwoman Hood had her hand up. Okay, Councilman Carol and then Councilwoman Hopkins.
Yeah, I was going to say, I, I do think it's a good idea. I appreciate Councilwoman Johnson bringing this up. I do think we should probably stick with Councilwoman Johnson's initial instincts to have it require that they show some sort of loss due to COVID. Because if we don't have that, then literally, I think, almost every home in the city, except for maybe the brand new ones, could have some sort of home improvement project that they could use this for. So since we have limited funds, I think we probably should stick it to people that at least can show some sort of economic loss to COVID.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, um, I think we want to discuss also, when we're talking about doing this for homeowners, are we talking about owner occupied homes? That is homes in the city uh who uh and uh the owners occupy it. Uh, or and or are, we want to consider uh homes that are uh located in Clarkston, but are rental homes because the um, the people in the home are going to be subject to the problems of lack of weatherization and other issues as well. So I would like us to, when we get further into this discussion, clarify what we're uh, who we're targeting.
And Councilwoman Hopkins?
Um, I think that covered part of it. I wanted to make sure that this is addressing like your primary residence and not your twenty rental properties because we're trying to help the residents more than, you know, that are most, that are primarily impacted. And again, I agree that it needs to be people who can show some loss uh for COVID related. But I, I think we need to put in there uh that it's your primary residence. I do think maybe if we were to consider doing people renting to the renters, then we would have to have some sort of signed agreement from the owner that they're willing to have this work done. And I also have a concern about Mr. Quinn's suggestion that the city hire or bid out this work because I think then that contractor becomes a representative of the city. And I have seen not all contractors are created equal just because they're licensed. And if a contractor goes out and causes damage to the house and that was the only option we gave a resident to select from to participate in this program, do we then become liable for that? Or would we be better off letting them choose their own contractor? And then we just say, okay, as long as they're a licensed contractor and the work is approved, then we'll do it. But if we pick the contractor, then I think we're responsible for that contractor and that, that scares me a little bit.
Thank you. That's an excellent point. And Councilwoman Bell?
I'll just add in here, I think Councilwoman Hopkins brought up a good point. I think, in my opinion, this should be expanded to property owners plus homeowners. And the reason of that being is because those residents that reside in their home are um the residents of the city of Clarkston. And so if they're living in deplorable um living conditions due to weatherization, like, we should also want to fix that and ensure that they have um, you know, quality living space as well. And so if there's leakage, all those things come back to the city. And I don't know why or it wouldn't, for me, I think we'd be doing a, a service to the residents that reside in there um to actually get the property managers to fill it out um, an application of.
Thank you. And it sounds like.
To ensure that the renters inside of the home uh actually have quality of living there.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bell. And Councilwoman Johnson, um, just as a clarity, would it be something where you would want this to go maybe to the housing in, in infrastructure to kind of flesh out a lot of the things that you're talking about now? Uh, you're on mute.
That, that would definitely be fine.
Okay, okay. So I think counsel, if you're not opposed to this and you have brought up some very excellent points, I think this would be an excellent one to have referred to the Housing and Infrastructure Committee to kind of flush out all the pieces that you were talking about. Vice Mary Yasu?
Well, um, I think you, you kind of answered it, but um that's what I really was thinking about. Um, and um, I just want to say as well, um, we.
I can't hear you. Vice Mary Yasu, let's try that one more time.
Your mouth moving, but we can't hear you.
Mouth is moving?
Okay, uh, I'm sorry.
There we go.
Yeah, so I, I was just saying um that uh we just want to make sure, you know, we are going to help the really needy people. And uh if somebody is a tenant and uh he's living in a, in a condition that is really not livable, I think that's going to be um uh, uh, an issue of uh our inspector in checking it and making sure that because we, if we open it, uh, we got so many apartments that they might apply in. They definitely own properties, so I don't know if we're going to be um helping this big corporation. So I just want to make sure we don't, um, we don't overextend. In a way, what we're trying to help is uh residents who've been impacted and who don't have uh, uh, who lost their job or means of income, uh elders. Or uh, we just want to make sure we are targeting people who are really going to be needy and who've been impacted, as we say, by COVID. Uh, but I really am not sure if somebody owns a bunch of properties and says he's been impacted by COVID and um uh, it's going to be difficult. He's already making money out of the tenants and I don't know if he can claim he's been impacted by COVID. I'm not sure. But anyway, so we just need, there is a lot of questions that uh, that, I mean, the intention is good to help the tenant, but um he doesn't own the property. So he definitely deserves to get all the living conditions that he needs. But I, I think that that should be done by our court enforcement. Um, uh, and nobody should be living in any condition that, that definitely uh without uh heating and all that. So, but I, I think these questions will be hammered out on the, at the committee level. And um it definitely is a deserving program. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. And, and just as a point of clarity, uh, if it's an apartment complex or a multifamily dwelling, that would be something more under the guidance of the apartment complex, taking that versus us talking about a single family home or a condo or a townhome, which would be more of, and Councilwoman Johnson, I think, the spirit of what you were talking about, that can be completely flushed out and have the appropriate guidelines. Is that correct? That's correct. Okay, and Councilwoman Bell?
I'm going to let this go to the committee and I'll disclose my comments there. However, my initial thought is that I know a lot of property owners that own single family homes that are not getting paid the rent because their tenants can't pay the rent, which is causing them a hardship and unable for them to fix the things that they need to fix in their home. We're talking about homes and I don't care what type of home you live in. I don't care if you own it, if you're renting it right now. If you have something that is due to weathering that needs to be fixed and we have a program for it, we should move forward with providing funds to that property manager in order to get that fixed for the residents and their children that reside in their home.
And thank you, Councilwoman Bell, for your comments. So I think we've gotten a lot of feedback. Um, number one, thank you, Councilwoman Johnson, to, for bringing this to our attention and making sure that we utilize these funds to make sure, especially in this cold time, um, that we do things to help our property owners improve their homes and essence, improve the quality of their lives. So Ms. Cal Wee, did we have anyone signed up? I see Mr. Clark's hand raised up there, but did we have anyone else signed up for this item?
This item H is Mr. Metford and then Mr. Clark.
Okay, Mr. Metford?
Hey, everybody. Uh, this is a great agenda item, uh, great robust discussion tonight. And my main concern is, I really think we should find some creative ways to not leave out the renters from this process. There are ways to help weatherize a uh dwelling that are not permanent, that are reversible, that actually don't need the permission of the owner. Things as simple as door draft stoppers or strip caulk around windows that are temporary. I don't want to generalize landlords, but the fact that they don't live at the location means they don't really care about what their tenant is being charged for heating and cooling. Um, so those things usually fall by the wayside. Uh, we have a large number of renters in this city and I think leaving them out um is very unfair of this, especially because those are some of the hardest hit people. Um, might even create more of a divide between the renters versus owners kind of thing that's been boiling around here. Um, I definitely, while you may think it's some large faceless corporation that we're improving an apartment complex, there's a lot of small rental groups, not even groups, rental people who own a unit, a house uh here in the city. Um, they're not working to get one over on the system. Um, they're just renting out a house they own. It's nothing nefarious. Uh, but the people who genuinely would benefit from this, or the people who are living in it, who are our citizens, um, who could use a little better weatherization to lower their heating bill or their cooling bills. Um, there are things you could do with lighting. Um, we just went through an extensive um energy audit uh actually at our house. So I learned a lot about all these things recently. But we really should find a way to include people who are living in rental units. And I'm telling you, you're not going to be making these people's places turn into a mansion. You're talking about um maybe showing people how to adjust the, the draft stopper at the bottom of their door. I just adjusted the three doors in my house the other day because there was a draft coming in the bottom. It took me five minutes with a screwdriver to fix that draft issue. Um, these are simple things can be done that can impact people that should be applied across homeowners and renters the same. So I would implore that the group think about the way to help all the citizens. Um, because frankly, there's more, more of the uh renter and other citizens that are homeowners in this city. So as a homeowner, I want to make sure we do not forget of our renter neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Metford. And Mr. Clark? And you can unmute that. There we go.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, once again, uh, I like the initial prospect of what Ms. Johnson brought up and also, okay, by Mr. Quinn and the city manager. I believe it's prudent to move forward because they've already got a strategy together. Sound like, oh, Ms. Johnson, or Councilwoman Johnson already, by, by implementing the program and getting with Ms. Cal Wee and the city manager uh and the uh, and the city attorney already know what program they want to put together to be tailor-made for her proposal. I believe that, now, I think she's talking about single family dwellings and those people that own those single family dwellings, if I'm not mistaken. So that's a good issue there. I think it's another issue to, to, to evade an apartment owner property, whether it's a good gesture or not. We might run into a problem with that, might have other issues that come up. Because when you start doing things like that, you inviting other issues to come up. But I do believe in the initial proposal that Councilwoman Johnson has and, and the city manager and with our city attorney, they're working on an agenda, working on how to tweak that and work that out. I don't think we need to bite too much of the apple off at once and jump the gun. You just work on what we need to work on and not just raging forward and hasn't and wind up doing anything because you got too much on the plate instead of working with the agenda at it. Thank you.
Clark, and again, I think one of the, the things that will happen is we've had a very robust discussion and we'll, we can refer it next week to housing and infrastructure. But also thanks to Mr. Metford's comments, what we can also consider when we have that discussion is partnering with some organizations that can help in terms of providing that additional education for weatherization. So I think that's an excellent opportunity for us to incorporate all of these things as well as providing procedures for, for it, for us to go forward. With that being said, if there's no more comments at this time on this item, we will proceed with item I, which is discussion of SPOSS zero nine, professional engineering services for Mel Avenue Crossing, multi-leg intersection, safety and operational improvements. Ms. Cal Wee?
Yes, Madam. The city of Clarkston requested proposals from qualified engineering design firms to provide engineering design, environmental and utility permitting, right-of-way plans, surveying, construction plans and specifications, bid documents with the manual and related traffic safety and operational improvements at the Mel Avenue CSX Crossing and adjoining Church and East Ponce de Leon Multi-Leg Intersection. Pond and Company and Volker Incorporated are the two prime companies that submitted RFPs for the city review. Um, Madam Mayor, myself and um the consultant engineer, Mr. Larry Kaiser, are um in. Are, um, in attendance. If you or any, um, city council member have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Calwee.
Correct.
Yes, Mr. Kaiser, do you want to go ahead and let us know about the Mel Avenue project?
Yes, I can, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Uh, this is, uh, SPOSS project that was identified in the two thousand seventeen, uh, program. The city council approved of at that time. Uh, it is a project that includes a signalization. Uh, of both church at Mel as well as church, a- as well as Mel at East Ponce. Uh, it includes also the realignment of Northern Avenue. Um, it's a proposal, uh, with two firms. Uh, we prepared the scope. Uh, and the scope is for the city to allocate, uh, SPOSS funding for the design work. Design work will be done in accordance with the federal procurement procedures. And the reason for that is at some point in the very near future, we will submit the plans. Uh, and the project, I should say, to the regional commission for federal funding for the construction phase of this project. So unfortunately, um, the process that we must follow is a, uh, long and arduous process. Uh, using federal funds in the future. Uh, that means the design work must be, uh, in accordance with G dot processes and procedures. Well, so instead of taking nine months to design a project like this, it's going to take two years. Very similar to the Streetscape project in terms of duration of time it takes to design a project. Because we are going to again, uh, be utilizing federal funds in the future on the construction phase. So the project is, um, um, it's something that we've talked about for years and years and years. Um, there's a safety problem there, as everybody's very familiar with. Uh, there's an operational problem. Um, there is a issue with, with, um, traffic congestion during certain times of the day. It's a well-needed project that everybody's complained about for at least, at least a decade. Uh, and so we, uh, we, um, two firms solicited and two mo- two firms submitted proposals. And, um, the city manager and I went through the proposals and we have a recommendation, uh. For the city manager to provide to you, uh, at your leisure.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser and City Manager, Ms. Calwee. Will go, did you want us to have the companies present or did you, how did you want to proceed with that?
We just wanted to give you this information. This is our first step. We wanted to, um, allow you to review the proposals that we have reviewed. Um, we will have, we have a recommendation at this time. But we wanted to make sure that we had this conversation in case Mayor or any council member had any questions. Related to the RFP and the work, um, of the two firms that submitted, um, as well.
Uh, Ms. Mayor, let me add one more thing before you continue, so you get a bigger perspective on this. Um, the federal procurement policy that the city adopted way back in two thousand and thirteen that we prepared and the city adopted. Um, indicates very clearly that the process for selecting design firms. Using federal funds in the future, whether it's federal funds for design or right of way or construction, doesn't matter. Uh, it's a two-step process. First step is you rank the firms, uh, technical proposals only. So whoever ranks number one, highest ranked technically. Then you ask that one firm, that highest ranked firm, uh, to submit a fee proposal. That fee proposal is then presented to the city. Uh, the city evaluates that fee proposal. Uh, including scope of work. If it, it needs to be negotiated, then it's negotiated. If the fee and the scope is fine. Then there's no negotiations. Uh, then that firm is then presented back to elected officials for approval. Contract is written, NTP is issued and off we go. Um, and so that's the federal procurement policy. Um, it is called qualification based selection, or it's also called the Brooks Act. And so we must follow that process to the T. Because as we all know, and maybe you're not familiar with this, we've had three audits. On the Streetscape project over the last five years and we've successfully met every audit. Uh, but because we followed the process very precisely.
Now, if we do not, Madam Mayor, want to go through this process, we can fully pay for this project. Out of city, city funds, but we desire not to. We want to go through the federal process to get that, um, funding assistance.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, counsel, did you have any questions at this time? For Ms. Calwee or Mr. Kaiser and Vice Mayor Yasu, followed by Councilwoman Hopkins and then Councilwoman Hood.
Uh, I, I, I think mine is more like a comment. I definitely want to say that, uh. This is, um, according to my oldest son, this is the most dangerous intersection in our city. Um, uh, while biking and walking, especially crossing, um, towards, um. On crossing from Mel across, uh, uh, across East, East Ponce. It's very dangerous, uh, for pedestrians and bicyclists, so. Um, I definitely believe we have to go ahead and approve this and. So, uh, and my question was, um, so right now, uh, are we going to approve anything next week? At the council meeting or this is just information?
No, you have to officially, uh, you have to officially approve of the highest ranked firm. To allow the city manager and I to negotiate the scope and fee with that highest ranked firm.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you for the excellent clarification, Mr. Kaiser. So we are at the process of, in this, uh, federal process of going ahead. And approving the highest ranked firm. So you, uh, that evaluation has already been undertaken. And then the next, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, then the next step would be. For the negotiations, et cetera, on the fee proposal. Is, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, correct. Thank you. Um. Uh, that remind me how the, uh, rank of number one was, was achieved. Between firms.
We have an evaluation matrix, uh, that was prepared. And the city manager and I ranked them, uh, in accordance with the evaluation matrix, which again is also part of the audit process. So I took the Streetscape's, um, um, matrix, modified it slightly. That the feds approved of in two thousand and fifteen or two thousand and fourteen and applied it to this project. So I suspect that, that if we are audited in the future, uh, that we're going to be just fine.
Right, that's great to hear. Um. I, I want, uh, go back to an issue that I, that I have concern about. Uh, and that I, uh, spoke to before I was on council. And that is the status of the city's ownership of the right-of-way. Uh, that is being encroached upon by, uh, the U-Haul facility. So, um, Mr. Quinn, I, I would like. Uh, to get s- some information direction from you, although this, on, on this matter. Because, um. I, I would hope that we could resolve with the property owner. Uh, that we have absolute total right. To use that ri- right-of-way and. That this issue be resolved sooner than later. Uh, so that we don't get partway through this long project. And then find that there's going to be a delay because of legal issues or whatever. So, um, can you give some guidance or, uh, elaborate on what our situation? There is with the right-of-way and how to best approach this?
So I have not investigated the facts on the ground, so to speak. As to where our right-of-way line is and where U-Haul's private property line is. But I can advise the council with total confidence. That it is impossible for anyone to, uh, acquire our right-of-way property. Um, by using it over time, you know, in that. The, the, the term for that, uh, uh, prescriptive, uh.
Easement.
Easement, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. That, that's just not possible over city property. So, y- you know, if, if we were to hire a surveyor, if we don't already have it. To draw a survey of where is our right-of-way line? And then it's just, if U-Haul would not, I mean, how are they using it? Have they put a structure in the right-of-way?
No, that's where they park their, their vans.
Oh, okay. So, you know, if, if they're basically using our right-of-way. But there's no improvement there, then we just give them notice that we sent them a certified letter. With a copy of the survey and say, hey, here's where our property line is. We've seen that you're putting your trucks in the right-of-way. You don't have the right to do it. And here's the code section that says if you do do it, we're going to give you a citation. And then we just give them the notice and then start enforcing it.
So the Cab County, uh, Ms. Hood, the Cab County, uh, about eight years ago, Mr. Pelton. Actually, maybe longer than that, maybe more like ten to twelve years ago. Um, they had a proposed project there, as you may recall, that was actually in the county, uh, for annexation occurred. I, and in the county acquired that right-of-way. I have the plans that reflect that. Uh, and we can surely go forward if you want early notice to the owner, which is fine. There's no problem with that. But we got to be really careful on how we, how we couch that letter, uh, Stephen. Um, because, because this is a federal, future federally constructed project. Uh, and so we got to be, we would have to get guidance from you to be sure that that letter is worded properly. Regarding ownership of that land, even though it was clear that the city owns that land. We, when we put them on notice, we just got to be really careful about that, uh, and we can talk about that offline if you'd like to.
Sure, I, I think that's a great idea and I think that I have a lot to learn about the facts of the specific situation. One of the things I'd like to talk about is, it sounds like maybe this right-of-way is actually owned by the Cab County rather than the City of Clarkston. So we will need to go through them. I mean, they're the ones that are the, in effect, the property owner, it sounds like.
So inex- inac- annexation, does not the roadways also become incorporated? On a project like this?
They do. Well, I mean, this is kind of a larger discussion. But there's three levels of roadways, state, county and city. And, uh, uh, the typical, um, county road. Will become a city street, but like county, county also has highways. Like, for example, Pont St. Leon, that's a county right-of-way. And so even within the city, they're the ones who are the owners of that right-of-way. And, uh, so we would just have to do a little review of, um. The specifics of this location and, uh. You know, I think that's something that Mr. Kaiser and I can work out pretty clearly. And, uh, we don't need to take up the meeting's time to get into all the details right now, but. I appreciate, uh, Councilmember Hood bringing it up.
All right, thank you. I just, I, I just want us to have the clearest. Uh, road ahead of us, no pun intended, on this project so that we don't have to. Um, stop, go back and, and deal with this. Because it is, this whole right-of-way there is a complicated issue. When it's been encroached on by a business and then we have the city or county or whatever. So thank you both for, um, participating in that discussion and I look forward to learning what, what the outcome is.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hopkins and then Councilwoman Bell and Councilwoman Carol.
Thank you. Um, my concern is that if you were to make the intersection. To what would be a sensible intersection where it would come straight across from Mel to Northern. And, you know, bisected by Ponce and Church Street, that it. I, I don't know how you definitely design property improved on, but it's more than just where the U-Haul parks the trucks. It's a hundred percent of their customer parking. It's an area enclosed by a chain link fence. They also have products that they rent out there. There's propane tanks and other things. So it would be a significant financial loss for them to lose that property. It would be, they would have customer parking. So, um, at the front door. So I think we do need to look into that because we are talking about, you know. Invested the money on paving the parking lot, putting a fence around it, having that as their only customer parking. Now, it might not impinge on the actual physical building, but I think taking the customer parking lot is significant. So we, we do need, I'm, I'm kind of with Councilmember Hood here in that. We need to be at least very conscious of what we're doing and let them be prepared for the impact. Because there is going to be a financial impact to them. Um, and that's something they're going to want to know about, even if, you know, we're in the right and it's our property. Um, if, if we're taking away somebody's income, they're using that property to produce income. I think it's, um, something. Now, my other question is, is this crossing going to have the, like a railroad gate?
Okay, we'll have the same arms as exist now and there'll be two signals.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bell.
Hey, Mr. Kaiser, um, thank you for elaborating on Pond, uh, and, uh. Volker, the other company, um, that have the two prime companies that submit RFPs. Um, the only question I have, so I think it's overdue for this intersection. I, I think all of us agree to that, um, for the improvement there. Um, my question is centered around, um, do you anticipate any delays with the timeline that they presented for the design? As well as any cost increase, um, due to just like COVID and just delays with the project as a whole?
No, the, once the fee is the fee, it's the fee. That doesn't change. Uh, unless we go out and change the scope of the work that we give them in the future. So whatever the design firm provides to us and we negotiate that fee or scope, then that is the, for the fee for the duration of the design time. Um, the period. The only hiccup, and it's not a increase in cost to the city. The only hiccup is the big unknown. And if you disregard the, the U-Haul, uh, spot for the, for a moment. The most significant problem is CSX. End of story. Uh, and so based upon all the experience that we have, um, it took us how long? Um, eighteen months or two years to get a permit from CSX to put a decorative fence along their right-of-way.
I remember.
So, so, so this project. This project should be viewed by CSX, I use the word should, as a safety project for them as well. All right, but CSX as being CSX, they don't really care. They don't want any crossings, right? And so whether you make it safer or not, they prefer to remove it if they could. Um, and so, so it's a safety project, but the time period for permitting will be anywhere from eighteen months to twenty-four months guaranteed.
Got it, and I, I expect that the, the planning, the planners and the engineers and the lawyers that they have on their team, will do they do diligence? As it relates to, um, companies that reside by the way, so.
Councilwoman Bell and Councilman Carol.
Yeah, so I guess maybe I missed it because I know we've had a lot of discussion, but can you kind of go through the pluses and minuses of Volker and Pond? And which one you recommend?
Yes, the city manager and I spoke about it, uh, this morning, uh, actually this afternoon. Uh, Shawana, did you want to talk about it? Do you want me to?
We can both do that, Larry.
Okay, so they were, yeah, so we had a pre, a pre-proposal meeting for any interested engineering firm. Like we do with any project, construction or engineering, back in October, I think. Uh, and five different firms came to the meeting. We discussed the scope in a public environment. Uh, and I thought we were going to have more than, uh, more than two. But given the, the amount of work in the Atlanta area in Georgia and the southeast. For engineering firms and contractors and architects, I guess we should be thrilled to have at least two. Uh, so both firms are very competent. I have worked with them for my entire career, thirty years, working with both firms. They're both very good. Wolker, Wolker is a more of an international company, uh, it's just a, United States wide and some, some work overseas. Very large firm. Uh, Pond is more southeast, you know, they're Atlanta-based. They've been Atlanta-based for, since nineteen fifty's. They've been in the southeast with various offices. So they're both very similar. When you, when you evaluate their proposals, their technical proposals. I like to really closely look at what they're submitting and pick apart anything that I find that that maybe they didn't adhere to, they didn't listen to me, they didn't meet the scope. Because we have two firms like this, they're always going to be very, very close. That's the way it always is. And so I found a few discrepancies in Volker's presentation in the technical proposal. They missed a few things, Councilman, that I thought they should not have missed. And so, you know, sometimes there is slight differences in firms, right? Slight differences. And I think based upon those minor mistakes, I would, and I think the city manager agreed, that Pond would be the company that we would recommend to city council.
Because Councilman Carol also, we looked at both in their experience with having C X S, C S X experience because that is the major part of the project and having those negotiations because of where the project is. So we again looked at the more experienced pond because of that, that item as well.
Any other discussion at this time from the council? Ms. Cowie, Council, City Manager Cowie. Do we have anyone signed up?
We have, we have Mr. Clark's hand is raised, but Mr. Medford did sign up for this item, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go first with Ms. Medford.
Yes, like to agree with a wet sun. This is a really terrible intersection in the city. And there's days where I skip it by going down Indian Creek Way just because it is such a nightmare of everybody trying to turn right and all the people stopping versus running the stop signs. It's just a nightmare. So this realignment is very welcome to those of us who live over here. But also just seeing the improvements that have happened through there. I can see where this alignment is really going to help a lot with those of us who have to traverse the railroad tracks, but also this general safety of the entire area. I looked at both proposals and I definitely think that Pond, I believe, understands us a little bit better than Volker does. And Volker had some options they gave, one of which was a kidney bean shaped roundabout, which I think is possibly one of the worst solutions you could put in that location. That is definitely not going to help, especially with the number of people that'll be stopped at the railroad tracks. It'll be absolute gridlock to do a roundabout right there. Just be terrible. I do business at the U-Haul quite often. That's where I fill my propane tanks. I carry them over there. And the employees there are aware that that parking lot isn't going to be there forever. I ask them every once in a while and they go, no. They're going to take that back eventually. You know, we we don't own that. We just park the trucks there and they just, basically, they say the county lets them use it. So is what the opinion is, but none of them have been like shocked to learn that the alignment's going to happen. So that's been my experience at least so far. But definitely Pond, I believe, is the correct solution for this. And it, to me, sooner is better, but if we can find federal funds for this, it might be worth it. We can spend the money elsewhere. But I just wanted to thank the council for bringing this forward and looking forward to riding my bicycle across there without dodging people running the stop sign. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Clark?
Yes, oh. Two things. I like what Mr. Kaiser is doing. With, I I think this is part of the 2040 plan, if I'm not mistaken. I've seen a lot of improvements and updated, updates since the 2040 plan was introduced. You can see evident of it working now. So I just want to commend him on that. Also too, finally, the council is going at great speed. But I just want to back up and just so be satisfied with this one thing. A, Agenda A, B, and C have already been finalized, correct?
Yes.
I just want to know.
You, we're, we're, we're okay, Mr. Clark.
I, I appreciate y'all and thank y'all so much, okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, with that being said, and no additional comments, we'll close on this item and move on to J, which is the discussion of change order for Splot 04 B and C pedestrian enhancement Trailhead and Roland Street mailbox replacement project. City Manager, Ms. Cowie.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is to discuss the change order for the Splot 04 B and C pedestrian enhancement Trailhead and Roland Street mailbox mailbox replacement project. The city is responsible for replacing all of the street skate mailboxes in perpetuity per the agreement the city has with all residents and business owners on Norman Road and East Ponce de Leon Avenue. The cost to remove, install, and/or replace the mailboxes on Norman Road and East Ponce de Leon Avenue is nine thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Madam Mayor? Or Mr. Kaiser, he's still available if you have any additional questions.
Okay, Mr. Kaiser, did you want to add anything?
Yes, let me back up his little history to this. So the street skate project included the mailbox as you see on Norman and a few of them on East Ponce de Leon. So the contractor, Amshiv Construction Company, installed those mailboxes per the contract. We knew all along that those mailboxes would be damaged in years going forward. We all knew that it was just going to happen. And so after the street skate project was completed, I went out and tried to find contractors, Amshiv as well, the original contractor. They gave us a price to come in and replace mailboxes, both the granite base as well as the mailbox as they were hit or damaged. Amshiv said they lost money on the mailbox installations as part of the street skate project. They gave us a price of $2,000 per mailbox. And I said, no, thank you. Then I asked another contractor that we deal with all the time, Leach Construction Company. They have done a lot of work in the city with sidewalks and so forth. They, he never gave us a price. He gave me a quote over the phone. He said, Larry, I'm not really interested, but I can do it for sixteen hundred. I said, no, thank you. So then I went to Soul Construction Company. And I said, Soul, who's doing 04 B and C, the Roland Street project, doing a good job. I said, go out and look at them. Here are the specs. Here's what they look like. Give us a price. They gave us a price. It's one, I don't have it in front of me. I think it's less than the contracted price of a street skate project. It's like $900 per per mailbox, everything, which is extraordinarily good. Very, very good, actually. And so this includes them replacing the two damaged ones on Norman Road. It gives Rodney two or three mailboxes and posts to put into his storage area in case he ever get knocked over. And it includes a few more on East Ponce where the owners did not assign the original form originally six years ago, and now they're interested in having those mailboxes put on East Ponce between 285, between Mel and Marcus Street, actually more towards, actually it's between Mel and North Indian Creek. So we've got five or six of them that we're going to put along there, two damages on Norman, a few extras for Rodney, and Soul is willing to do it for that price. And it's a really, really good price, actually.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Counsel, did you have any questions at this time? Vice Mayor Yasu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to also add that there is one more mailbox just before you get on North Indian Creek on East Ponce that has been damaged. So I just, okay, all right, awesome. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, thank you. I don't have that in the item up in front of me now, but I seem to recall there was some question between where these mailboxes were going to go. So if you could go over that, I'd appreciate it. But also, I guess my question is, is there a reason we have something other than a mailbox post with a mailbox on it?
Can you clarify that question?
The the ones on, the ones on Norman, do they not have the the decorative stone around them or?
Yes.
Like that, right? So was on Roland, are those going to be that as well? And I, my question is, since I'm new to the council, I don't know when these decisions were made, but why are we putting something more elaborate than a post with a mailbox?
So, Ms. Mayor, if you don't mind, let me go through a little bit about a minute of history. So there are no new mailboxes like these being put on Roland Road, Roland Street. The reason it's under this project is because the street skate project funding is not there anymore. So we had to find a place, someplace to fit this, this change order. It could have been under Marcus Street, it could have been under Roland, Splot 04, could have been in any funding category. It just so happens Soul, because they're working on Splot 04, that's how it's put on that quote. That's the only reason. So the mailboxes on Norman Road as part of the street skate project and East Ponce as part of the street skate project was a decision that was made back, you know, back in fourteen, fifteen. We, you know, city manager and I and and the, and council spoke about, it'd be really neat to revise something a little bit different on a street skate project that really makes the street stand out. And those mailboxes truly, particularly during the sunlight, really look quite neat when they reflect off the top of the mailboxes. So the the scope of work for this is to replace the damaged ones already on Norman Road. I think there's one or two. It also includes the damaged one, one so far on East Ponce and two new ones on East Ponce that the owners are going to sign up for. The same design, same top, same base, same everything. And then there is going to be two more, I think, I don't have the proposal in front of me, that where the post at the top will be given to Rodney. And if the, if there's ever a damage to the post only, he has that. But if there's damage to the, to the granite base, Rodney may have to try to do that himself. And so, so that's what the quote is for. It's a little mishmash of everything, Ms. Hood. But it's going to get us to the point of taking care of the damaged ones right now, which is the most important thing.
Okay, so it doesn't have anything, this doesn't have anything to do with post post mailboxes on Roland. Okay, that, I misunderstood that. Thank you.
No problem. Vice Mayor Yasu?
I just got a quick question. And whenever a mailbox or any city property is damaged, do we also, don't we get any reimbursement from the insurance company?
If we find the, if we find the person that damaged it, yes.
Oh, okay.
Accident report.
Have we, have we found the people who are damaging this?
So only Shawana would know that, you know, Robin did before and Shawana does now with the accident reports. And Dan, you know, Dan and I talk to each other, it seems like monthly about damaged fences, mailboxes, pedestrian poles that are hit. Everything you can imagine, counsel. And so as accident reports are generated, Dan or Shawana tells me, and then we get a quote. Repair is done. We give it to Dan. Dan seeks reimbursement.
Any other questions? Ms. Cowie, do we have anyone signed up for this item?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay, with that discussion closed, just as a point of clarity, items H will stay on the agenda. Item I will stay on the agenda as a discussion point, and then this item will also stay on the agenda? Or did you want this as a consent?
I think we can move on to consent. No, if we don't have any objections to this one.
No objections? All right, so we'll have item J for consent agenda. Thank you all. And with that being said, we will close this agenda item and move on to K, which is discuss, discussion to appoint council members to the Standing Advisory Committee, Public Safety and Legal Committee, Transportation and Environment Committee, Housing and Infrastructure Committee, and then we need to make these changes. It would be the Community Development and Civic Innovation Committee, Equality Inclusion Opportunity Committee, and we need to make sure we have the Business and Economic Development Committee because, as you remember last year, council, former Councilman Perkins changed that committee to being a Business and Economic Development Committee. Ms. Cowie?
That is on you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, that's on me. Okay, that's on me. Sorry about that. So again, no problem. So counsel, if you notice in that section, we had our standing advisory committees. And again, I read those top, those, those committees off. And again, we made that change last year during, I think, the July council meeting where we made the change to the names of the committees. And as you see, each one, we'd have a chair along as one or two council members to serve on that committee, and the mayor can serve on the committee. But each council person will have the opportunity to chair a committee. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through these committees, if you don't mind. And then don't all of you raise your hands at the same time. But we're gonna, I'm gonna tell you who who we had as chairs before and then go from there to see who wants to chair each one of these committees. Is that okay? All right. So starting with Public Safety and Legal, we had Vice Mayor Yasu as the Chair. You still want to chair?
Madam Mayor, the reason I I ended up chairing that committee was because we had only, there was only five of us at that time. And when after the election, Councilmember Perkins decided to co-chair with me instead, so that's why. But I am willing to be in that committee, but probably not as chair. Instead, I would like to chair the the other committee, the Environment Committee.
Yeah, okay. So with that being said, thank you, Vice Mayor Yasu. We have that committee open for someone who would like the opportunity to chair Public Safety and Legal.
We don't want everyone to talk at once.
Okay, so we'll come back to that committee because I know that's a hot committee. So the next one is the Housing and Infrastructure. Well, okay, let me ask you this. Who else wants to serve on that committee?
I would like to stay serving in legal, but I would prefer to stay as Chair in housing.
Serve is on there, okay. Serve. Councilwoman Johnson, did you still want to serve on that committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then I was on that committee too. Sir, okay. Now we'll move on to Housing and Infrastructure. And Councilman Carol, you said you would like to continue to chair that committee?
I would.
Okay. And we had Councilwoman Hopkins as the Vice Chair for that committee. Did you want to be in that capacity?
You're on mute.
You're on mute. You're still on mute. I know you have a great thought right there. Go ahead. You're still on mute again. Okay, there we go.
On housing, I would like to serve on it, yes.
Want to serve, but you, okay, we'll have you just serve. Okay. Okay. And Councilwoman Johnson, you were serving on that one?
I was on it.
Okay. Now, we have the Community Development and Civic Innovation Committee that was chaired by Councilwoman Johnson and Councilman, Vice Mayor Yasu was on there. How, how, what is your pleasure, Councilwoman Johnson?
It depends on the diversity and inclusion one. If Councilwoman Hopkins is going to chair that one. We'll determine if I chair this one.
I would like to chair. I would like to chair the Equity, Inclusion, and Opportunity.
Okay. Well, I would like to continue to chair this one if, if nobody else wants to do it. I can't hear anybody if they're talking.
So I would like to serve on uh the Community Development Committee, and even be the Vice Chair, um, if possible. And I also wanna serve on Housing and Infrastructure.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I didn't, I'm sorry, okay, okay.
What, what didn't you hear?
No, I didn't hear you when, when we went through the housing one, I didn't hear you.
Oh, well, you had started with Community Development, I don't wanna stop you.
Okay, so, okay, Councilwoman Bell, I have you serving. Okay, sir. So I have you on the Housing to serve, and then you can be the Vice Chair for the Community Development and Civic Innovation. Uh, anybody else wants to help out with that? Okay, Vice Mayor Yasu, you wanna serve?
Yes, I just wanna be part of the committee. And by the way, I kind of forgot earlier, I didn't, you were not talked, if you, you didn't say Vice Chair, but I, I would like to Vice Chair the Public Safety Committee if there's nobody gonna be doing it.
You want to? Cause we, okay, Vice Chair of the Public Safety. Okay, I'll put you down as Vice Chair.
But you do know, Vice um Mayor Yasu, if we don't have a chair, you wanna be the Vice Chair, you're simply gonna be the Chair.
Uh, I mean.
From you. Did you not wanna hear what you just said?
I'm sorry, I, I was saying, um, you, you are, you are not asking about the Vice Chairmanship, but um at this point, I, we haven't decided who's gonna chair it, but I think uh we'll, we'll see, we'll talk about it, I guess.
It might be a process of elimination in a minute. So, okay, so next. We have that uh, we did the Community Development and Civic Innovation Committee, and we got that covered. Um, and I'll put myself there. And so we have Transportation and Environment Committee, and that was chaired by Vice Mayor Yasu, so you, you, you taking full ownership of that one, correct? Okay, all right, we got you there. Uh, Councilwoman Hopkins. Want to chair this one, or did you want someone else to do that? I mean, Vice Chair?
Vice, Vice Chair, Vice Chair.
Anybody else wants to serve?
Can I serve in that committee as well?
Okay, so I see uh Councilwoman Bell had her hand raised.
I don't care. You can have it.
So then we have the new one, which was changed from Marketing and Civic Innovation Committee to Business and Economic Development Committee. And uh Councilwoman Hood has a hand raised.
Yes, I, I would be interested in chairing that. My understanding is that the Mark was Mark, uh Perkins Chair of that, and we don't currently have a Chair.
Right, he was the Chair with Councilman Hassan, and both of them are gone. So.
So, I, I, I would uh like to be considered for Chair of that.
And I would like to be Vice Chair.
Okay, we got you.
And I would like to serve.
Like to serve, and I'd like to serve with you. Okay, how about that? So we have uh Hood as Chair, um, Vice Chair Bell, and Johnson Burks. Okay, and then we have Equity, Inclusion, and Opportunity. We have Councilwoman Hopkins as Chair, and then who would love to be Vice Chair?
Me.
I would like to serve, Madam Mayor.
Serve you shall. And I'm all over the place, so. So that means who did not chair? Who's not chairing something? Councilwoman Bell?
It's me.
You're gonna be the big Public, Public Safety and Legal Committee Chair?
I don't mind serving in any capacity. However, that is not ideal for me to serve as Chair, but I will. Give me Public Safety and Legal Committee.
I'm on the team.
Thank you. Okay. So I wanna thank everyone for your participation and chairmanship. With that being said, we will make sure, Ms. Cowie, that we si- send out the um application for people to um apply for those positions. If you don't mind, and then from there, we can go ahead and have the chairs to select the committee members. Yes, um, first, let me make sure, Councilwoman Hood, did you have a question?
Yes, I had had my hand up uh to be a member of the Transportation and Environment. If, if that's a, yeah. And if that's too many members, I could do the um Community.
We're good. You're good.
All right, thank you.
Madam. Yes, Madam. Yes. Clarity, read all of those again for us, please.
Outstanding. Thank you again. We'll make sure, cause this is also gonna be on a consent agenda, if that's okay with everyone, all right? So, we'll have Public Safety, and thank you for the return of Councilwoman Bell, taking that on. Thank you so much. And we have as uh Vice Chair, Vice Mayor Yasu. And we have as a member um serving, Councilwoman Johnson, Councilman Carol, and Mayor Burks. Is that good with everybody? Did I miss anybody? All hearts and minds, thank you. Next one, Housing and Infrastructure Committee. We have Councilman Carol to serve as Chair, and we have Councilwoman Hopkins to serve. If, you didn't wanna serve as Vice Chair? No Vice Chair, you're just on there, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then we have um serving, and then Deborah Johnson, and uh Councilwoman Bell, and the mayor. Is that everyone? And that is Housing and Infrastructure. And then Community Development and Civic Innovation Committee. Councilwoman Johnson serving as Chair, uh Councilwoman Bell serving as Vice Chair, Council, Vice Mayor Yasu as a member. Correct? And Council, and Mayor Burks. Transportation and, and Environment Committee, Vice Mayor Yasu serving as Chair, uh Councilwoman Hopkins, you still wanted to serve as Chair for that committee, Vice Chair for that committee, correct? And we have Councilman uh Carol and Councilwoman Hood on that one. Okay. Uh, Business and Economic Development, we have Councilwoman Hood serving as Chair. Council, Council, Councilwoman Bell, you got how many Vice Chairs? Let's see.
I don't know, you can take some of them from me. All I need is two, three, but it was multiple things I wanted to leave off.
So, so I have you um as Vice Chair on the Community Development. I have you Vice Chair on the Business and Economic Development. Which one do you have more of a pleasure?
I want both of those, unless somebody wants to take one of them from me.
Hmm. Uh-oh, not the intimidation, look. Not the intimidation, look. So. No, ma'am, so you just have it all to yourself.
Okay, thanks.
All right, there we go. And then we have um Councilwoman Bell as Vice um Chair, and Councilwoman Johnson serving on the committee, and Mayor Burks is serving on that committee. Did I exclude anyone? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Equity, Inclusion, and Opportunity. We have Councilwoman Hopkins to serve as Chair. We have uh Councilwoman uh Bell to serve as Vice Chair now, yeah, 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 you, you.
Drop me phone, I just wanna serve on that one.
Okay, so we'll serve. Um, so Vice Mayor Yasu, would you serve as Vice Chair?
Yeah, I would like to.
Okay, all right, we got you on here as Vice Chair. And Councilwoman Bell is serving.
Johnson.
And Councilwoman Johnson is um serving.
Correct.
And then the mayor. So Vice Mayor Yasu is serving on that capacity. With that being said, Council, can we agree to have this as a consent agenda item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Vice Mayor Yasu.
I agree, uh, except for the um application of um members. I think um uh we can open it for all, but I certainly would love to to see also leave that discretion on the chairs, uh, so that I definitely would love to, some of the members of my committee, especially one of them would continue, I, I want her to continue um on the committee. So uh, I, I, what I would do is leave it open, and um I think we can have up to three community members per committee, so we can select who we want based on their application and criteria, and um so, um, but um, I think, yeah, that's, that's fine with me, so. But I, I just wanna make it clear that it's gonna be the discretion of the, the Chair to select who they want to serve, of course, with the Vice Chair assistance as well.
Yeah, this agenda item is just to appoint the city council members to the standard.
Right, that's.
I think whatever you do.
Right, right. So just as a point in the old document, it says the concurrent vote of two elected appointed to a uh SAC shall be required to appoint or remove the general public as a member of such SAC. Public members of an SAC may be appointed or removed anytime for any reason by the elected officials of that committee. Okay? So you will be able to do that once we get the additional names. All right, so with that being said, Ms. Cowie, did we have anyone signed up for this one?
JK?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, with no additional comments from the public and the wonderful work of our council knocking this out, thank you so much. We will close this agenda item and move on to L, which members to the Early Learning Task Force, the Youth Advisory Council, the Senior Resident Advisory Council Committee, the public, I mean, the Police Community Task Force, the Preventative Health Task Force, the Public Arts Advisory Committee, and the Charter Review Committee. And so, with that one, the Police Task Force already has the members, and we just need to make sure we activate them. We kinda had that one on a little pause because of the transition that we had. So that one, all the members were approved, and they are to serve for a two-year term, so that one's the, the easy one to knock that one out. Council, um, the Early Learning Task Force, their term has expired. And so, Council, your pleasure for this one, and did, would you like for them to continue the work that they're doing? And potentially, uh, I know Roberta is on the line as well. Um, I know she wanted to do a report to kinda give us a status of where they are. Um, but with the work that they're doing, they still have a lot of work to do for our community. They're doing a great job. So yes, Councilwoman Bell?
Yeah, I would like for the Early um Learning Task Force to continue to do the work. As you mentioned, it's still a lot of work. On the pandemic has illustrated the need for um more equitable policies and programs, so we have early learning activities. Uh, and in addition to that, uh, Roberta and me had a conversation a couple of weeks ago, and so she's uh, has already, before this even come up to be appointed, renewed, uh, agreed to help me with some projects that we are hopefully gonna come, make, continue with, you know, ongoing.
I, I would agree with that. I've been to many of their meetings. I know they're still meeting monthly. I know many of these boards aren't really meeting anymore, but I know the Early Learning Task Force is an exception that they are still meeting, they're still doing work.
Vice Mayor Yasu?
Yes, uh, I also agree that we definitely could use their um, their um, their help. Um, I have attended so many of their meetings, and it's definitely fruitful, and um uh, we have passionate group of um uh educators and some residents in there. Uh, so I definitely, and it's also been added to the budget already, I believe, so I think that is, that'll be a good uh, that'll be totally good for us to continue, uh, for, for them to continue. And I also would love to to stay, uh, I'm not sure if Councilmember Carol wants to stay there as well. I would love to stay in the um group as well. Thank you.
So Councilman Carol and Vice Mayor Yasu, and it sounds typically there is a liaison, one or two liaisons from um, the council to attend the meetings. And Councilman Carol, and I think Vice Mayor Yasu are both on there. Would you like to continue that?
I would.
Okay.
I would as well, yes.
Okay, so we have, and for the Early Learning Task Force, do we want to make this another year for them? Okay, so a year being that, um, let's just go ahead and say January twenty twenty-three. Cause if we typically do all of this in February, we can just go ahead and say January twenty twenty-three. Is that fine for everyone? Okay, outstanding. So, for Early Learning, you guys keep doing the wonderful work that you're doing. We'll have Councilman Carol and Vice Mayor Yasu as liaisons. We'll keep you on until January twenty twenty-three. And uh, we'll make sure to have uh Ms. Roberta to do a report to, to kinda tell us where they are as a task force. Thank you all for that. Any other discussion on that point? Hearing none, we'll go to the Youth Advisory Committee, and so, Council. And so, that one, we definitely can activate. Um, I'm looking forward to that, and we can get some of our wonderful uh, young adults to participate, and I know that we have the position of also their advisor as part of that as well. So, Council, um, normally what we can do with that one, um, I think in the past, we've said that we would have the council to appoint, um, you know, get the applications of people who are interested, may, and then the council could appoint. I think the mayor usually got to appoint two, or however the number we decide, and then the council um either pick either one or two per person. So what is your pleasure as it relates to this? I see, but uh Councilwoman Bell had her hand raised first.
Yeah, I think we should move forward with the Youth Advisory Commission, uh, I mean, Council, uh, and let people, uh, let youth apply, as we have been, but we gotta figure out another way for outreach, uh, because the person that drafted was me, and so ever since I drafted, we've been trying to get youth to apply. We may get four or five ones to apply, but uh, not enough to actually have a host of, of sit-down meetings, so. Uh, but yes, I think we should move forward with it.
So we'll go ahead and, and thank you for that insight as well, um, in, in terms of getting people involved and engaged. So, in terms of the application, um, we'll go ahead and s- request people to submit applications. We'll work with Clarkston um High School as well, um, and some of the uh Tucker, cause I think Tucker and Clarkston High are our two high schools that we have. And who would like to serve as the liaison for this one? And that would be Councilwoman Bell and Vice Mayor Yasu. Okay. Bell and Yasu. Yes, okay. And any other discussion as far as that item?
We got a question.
Yes, yes.
Uh, so I believe there were some applicants that applied, I know, and uh um, are we gonna consider the previous applications that has been, because I know nobody got appointed. That has been, because I know nobody got appointed, uh, but the application that was opened, but nobody ever got appointed, um, to my knowledge.
What we'll do is we'll have them to reapply because they may have moved, we don't know what their circumstances are. And so it's best to make sure that they still have that enthusiasm to participate. And with that, they'll go ahead and complete the application process, is that good?
Yeah, you brought up a valid point though, uh, Vice Mayor Yasu, a lot of the children, a lot of youth didn't live in our city limit. So at some point, we're going to have to expand the band, boundaries, such as like the Cab County, um, to get more, um, youth to sit on their vice, but we can discuss that.
Okay, with that being said, we'll move on to the seniors Advisory Committee. And I know we're going to have a real robust, because if we have any of those wonderful seniors in our community, as well as that new senior facility that we have, I can just see we're going to have a robust committee, so we can make sure we send that application over to the Stern Center as well as making sure that we communicate in contact with our seniors, and we had some other people who weren't seniors that were participating as well. So Council, who would love to be a liaison for that one? I see the hand of Councilwoman Johnson there. And I'm going to be on there with you as well. Johnson, okay. All right.
And Councilmember Hood also had raised their hands.
Councilwoman Hood had her hand raised, okay. Outstanding. Um, preventative, and I, and I said, we already have that one identified that for the Police Task Force. Um, they, they already have their deadlines and everything else for that one, so it was just a matter of them starting to meet. And Ms., our city manager is going to make sure we start those wonderful meetings. Um, so we have that one already covered. And we'll move on to the Preventative Health Task Force. So I know, uh, Councilwoman Hopkins was appointed to that one, um, who else?
I can serve on that one.
You can serve on that one, outstanding, and I guess I can serve on that one as well too, so we got that one.
Me too.
Okay, we, okay. Okay. Ms. Cal, Ms. Calwee, you, you have the names for these.
Do I, am I writing them down as you go as the liaison? I am, I do have those.
Okay, all right, okay, I just want to make sure, because we're going to make this one a consenting, if we can get through. Okay, and then we have the Public Arts, that's me, um, who else wants to serve on that one? Okay, Councilwoman Hood and Councilwoman Hopkins. Okay, we got Hood and Hopkins.
Are you on this committee as well, Madam Mayor?
Um, because I'm, I'm, I'm doing police one.
Okay, just.
I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let someone else, I'm gonna let someone else enjoy that, enjoy the arts one. Okay, and then the Charter Review, we have that one listed. And is that something that we need to continue, or how, what is the pleasure of the council?
Um, I think that their tenure had expired last year, I believe, but, uh, I think, uh, they did, uh, what they were required at that time, um. I don't know if we want to revisit it again, I'm not sure if that is something that the council wants to do, but, uh, uh, Councilmember Hood might be a perfect person to comment on this, since she was on that, she was one of the chairs of that committee.
Did you, did you finish your job for that moment in time?
Yes, um, I, I would suggest that maybe we put this off for one year. I, I, I think we've got, uh, a full plate with many other things and, and, uh, so I, I think, uh, putting this off for one year would, would work. Um, and one of the recommendations that came out of it was the creation of an Ethics Committee. So, um, I would like for us at some point to discuss the creation of that. And, uh, because we felt very strongly that the city's ethics ordinance needed to be strengthened and broadened. So, uh, someone can let know the best approach to dealing with that, thank you.
Thank you for that comment, so based on that input, we will hold off on doing anything with the Charter Review right now. And we will go with the said committees that we've talked about and then look at again, um, the recommendations that were presented from the Charter Review Committee. So with that being said, uh, we'll go ahead and have the application process um, for people and then review the applications and then decide from there, is that okay for everyone? Outstanding, and with that, I see some hands raised, but, uh, City Manager Calwee, did we have anyone signed up first for this?
They did, Madam Mayor, we have, uh, Mr. Armon Wilkins. I'm sorry if I pronounced your name.
Speak now.
Yes, ma'am, good evening, yes, ma'am, that was right, Armon Wilkins. Hello and good evening to you all, um, thank you for having us. My name is Armon Wilkins, I'm a case manager with the U Bill Two Program out of the DeKalb County Courthouse. Um, I have one with me tonight, my supervisor, Mr. Travis Williams. Uh, we just wanted to make you all aware of our program, and we think that maybe we could work with your, uh, maybe early learning, um, initiative, uh, the U Bill Program is for youth between the ages of sixteen to twenty-four that mainly dropped out of high school. Um, and it's basically a GED program with job training skills and job placement. Uh, we do about seven different tracks, so someone can go to college, someone could go choose welding, they could do construction, environmental services, and this is all paid for by, uh, grants from the Department of Labor in DeKalb County. So we just wanted to make you all aware of the program and is open to anybody in Clarkston and thirteen, and twelve other zip codes in DeKalb County.
Well, thank you for letting us know about that, and so we will definitely make sure that our city manager, uh, gets that information so that we can disseminate it out to the public. And we definitely will try to make sure our residents take advantage of it. And thank you and Mr. Williams for coming online to let us know about it. Um, we definitely want to do whatever we can for our community and especially if there's an opportunity for workforce development as a city, we are grateful for you letting us know about the potential partnership.
All righty, and should I, should I reach out to you, Ms., is it Ms. Quie, I'm sorry?
Calwee.
Ms. Cal, but I have your name, Mr. Wilkins, and I can reach out to you, or you can, um, email me as well.
All right, thank you all kindly, it's been a great and lively meeting, best one I've attended.
Great meeting, thank you.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
No, 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 it was well worth it, I'm, I'm fine.
Can you put your information in the chat?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All righty.
All right, thank you all, and so Ms. Calwee, did we have anyone else?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have Mr. Metford.
Metford.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to agree with Susan that there is still work to be done with the Charter Review Committee, uh, as she mentioned about the ethics, uh, issues. Uh, and actually, I'd like to just say that the work of the Charter Review Committee actually never ends because life changes and the world changes. Um, the thing, new things come up, and so there are things that need to be addressed, especially that have come up in the pandemic that I believe could be addressed through emergency situations and other procedures that are codified in the Charter Review. So while putting it off for a year, um, can work, I would not go any longer than that, I think things that need to be handled. Um, I guess now I may, I don't, I guess as a former member of the committee, I'd also throw my name in the hat again already. Uh, to go back in there, because I actually, I enjoy these kind of procedural dives into how our city works. Um, and so, but definitely, I don't think that the Charter Review is the kind of thing you just do a one and done, especially you don't wait near as long as we did. Uh, but about a probably three to four-year rotation would be as far as you want to go. So maybe we get, we start looking at this, uh, towards the end of next year, so we can get, hit the ground running in January of next year, thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Metford, we would not deprive you of being involved in the procedural matters of this committee, so thank you again. Councilwoman Hood, did you have a question? You're on mute.
I'd say, uh, I appreciate, um, Brian's remarks, and we, the city will be very fortunate indeed if he, uh, continues to be involved in the Charter Review efforts.
Thank you, and Ms. Calwee, did we have anyone else signed up? I see Mr. Clark has his hand raised.
Mr. Clark has his hand raised, and also, um, Ms. Roberta Malavenda also, um, signed up for this item.
Okay, Ms. Roberta, we'll let Ms. Roberta go and then, um, Mr. Clark.
Uh, good evening, and I'll, I'll be short, I just want to thank the council for, um, reappointing the, uh, Early Learning, uh, Chalkier Task Force and say that, um, it's been an active group. Um, and, uh, two things I'd like to recommend. One, there are some members that have moved and gone on to other things, and there are other people that are in their place, and there are some people that would like to join, so I would like to work with Ms. Calwee to take a look at the list, uh, make some recommendations of two or three new people to join and to work with her to get a letter out, um, on behalf of the mayor and the city council to make sure they get reappointed instead of our first meeting. Um, and second, to set a date when we can come to you and give you a brief verbal report, as well as our written report, whether that be, um, at the next work session or the next council meeting. So if you could let me know which is, what your preference is, we'll be prepared to give a verbal and a written report, um, either at the next council meeting or at the, I guess it would be the February work session and/or the March, um, council meeting, and thank you very much.
Yeah, I will work with you on that, um, Roberta, and, um, placing that item on our agenda.
Great, thank you.
So we'll, we'll look forward to hearing from you next month, if that's fine.
Uh huh.
Okay, I want to make sure we have enough time for you, because I know you're going to have a really robust report, so we're going to look forward to that. Thank you, and, um, and again, thank you for your team and all the work that you guys have continued to do. So we really appreciate everything that you've been doing with the Early Learning, um, Task Force. And Mr. Clark, you wanted to make a comment?
Oh, yes, I like to, uh, in the continuation of my ambition to serve the city, I want to just make clear, I, I've been, I've been leaning on the shoulders of Ms. Calwee, uh, right much, uh, about the site committees, uh, I still need to communicate with you, Ms. Calwee, because I know that I put in some applications for those, uh, for the council to make a decision on that, I, I'm ever how it works. Um, I'm very happy of the appointment I do have, but, uh, I just wanted to know if, uh, if I could serve the city even the more, and do I continue to communicate with you?
But, Mr. Clark, thank you so much, you know, I want to make sure you get your feet wet when you're doing that planning and zoning. And so we are looking forward to your application and whatever committees you decide, we'll let the chairs let you know, okay?
And I'd be happy to get my feet wet with the planning and zoning, Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir.
Your guidance has always been good for me.
Thank you, and thank you for your commitment to this community, again.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all for this discussion, Ms. Calwee, does that conclude the comments?
For this item, yes, ma'am, ma'am, oh, miss, there's a hand raised.
Yes, uh, Miss, Miss Beauty Company, yes.
Great day, how are you guys?
All right, and what is your name?
My name is Monae Sanders.
Sanders, what did you like to say about this agenda item as it refers to the committees?
Yes, ma'am, it's a couple of committees that I fell out of line and I would love to join. I actually live in the city of Clarkston, and I have a nonprofit organization, which is Alopecia and Beauty Co. For medical research of autoimmune disease sufferers of hair loss like alopecia, cancer, and lupus. Um, I'm actually looking to build a medical center in the area, and, um, but I want to start off, you know, just basically getting involved, helping with whatever communities you got, you know, committees and things of that nature you guys have. I love to serve, um, I have abundance of qualifications and things I do already, um, with different programs under my organization, so, um, I just want to make it clear that, you know, I'm here and I'd love to lend a helping hand.
Thank you so much, and thank you for attending our meeting and expressing your willingness to serve. Make sure that you reach out to Ms. Calwee and complete the application for the committees that you would like to participate on, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and Ms. Calwee, with that?
We shall move on to the agenda item, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and Council, we've all agreed that this too will be a consent agenda item, correct? I love those thumbs up, thank you, so now we are at the last agenda item. And we're doing a great job, it's discussion of the City Council and Staff Retreat. And Ms. Calwee, would you like to talk about that one?
Well, yes, Madam Mayor, um, we're so excited that we have new members or returning members, and with that, um, we have new ideas and new progression, visions and goals for the city. So we want to collaboratively get together with the department heads and the mayor and city council, so we can go through those goals and missions and, um, formulate a strategic plan for the city as we move forward and making sure that we accomplish some of those goals. So we are in discussion for City Council, um, Staff Retreat, where we will just meet and, um, have, uh, workshops and, um, allow leadership to review accomplishments from our previous years and to establish again program, goals, and strategies for the upcoming year. So, um, our city clerk did mail out or email each and every one of you with respective dates that will be conducive to your schedule, so that we can, um, plan this event effectively. Madam Mayor? You're on mute, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was just talking, um, City Manager Calwee, would you mind going over those dates so we can just take care of that right now?
The dates that were emailed to everyone, Madam Mayor, was March the eleventh and, uh, March the thirty-first. One day is a Thursday and one day is a Friday, Madam Mayor. Let me check and make sure, which is which on my calendar. The eleventh is on a Friday and the thirty-first is a Thursday, Madam Mayor. And Ms. Hood has a question.
Oh, yes, Ms. Hood.
Uh, I, uh, both of those dates work for me, um, and I realize that it's good to do this strategic planning as soon as possible, uh, but I would just like to, um, throw out the thirty-first as perhaps a preferred date because, uh, that would give us, uh, hopefully more time to get past the Omicron peak, et cetera, and, uh, perhaps be in a better situation relative to meeting in person.
That, that is our goal, Mrs.
So, uh, I hear the thirty-first, Council, uh, Vice Mayor Yasu.
I totally agree with, uh, Councilmember Hood, um. I personally prefer in-person, um, meeting for especially this one, I, I, I can just assure you, I mean, just for me, um, I learn a lot better when it's in person, face to face. I just don't feel like, um, uh, I just don't feel like, um, uh, it would be appropriate. I mean, or well, we don't have a choice for because of the pandemic, but, um. I would prefer for it to be an outdoor if necessary, but it had, uh, but possibly, uh. Uh, in-person event.
So I have you, I'm, I'm gonna go down the list and then we can finalize this date. So I have Councilwoman Hood on either or, but her preference is thirty-first. Vice Mayor Yasu, I have you down for the thirty-first. Is that correct?
That's fine, yes.
Yes, okay. Uh, Councilman Carol?
I, I would prefer the thirty-first.
Councilwoman Johnson?
I don't, I don't know what day of the week that is.
Thursday.
I can't do, I can't do a Thursday. I opted for the eleventh when the email came out. Um, but I can't do the thirty-first.
It seems to me that we need to find other dates. I mean, all of us, we want everybody to be present. And she didn't answer it initially like I did. I think it was only a few of us. So we need to go back to the drawing board, um. City manager Cal Wee and Tamita, because everybody needs to be there.
And I think that the initial email was in person.
Right. What are the dates that you were looking for? What is your preference that will assist us? On the dates that we send to you. Um, Ms. Lewis also stated that she sent March the third as well, which is, again, is it, it is a Thursday. So it will assist us as we send out dates with limited responses to get which date will be beneficial to the team.
Sounds like Friday, is a Friday a better day for the team?
Nope.
Yes. Okay, so I'm getting a no with Councilwoman Hopkins and, uh, yes. So what date is a good day?
Could we do like a doodle poll on this and just pick up, I'm, Friday, I just can't do the last Friday of the month. Um, I have, always have a thing on the last Friday of the month, so any other Friday is fine. Councilmember Johnson, you're, you're like shooting for specifically a Friday, right? I'm thinking so it does clash. Okay, so for me, any Friday as long as it's not the last Friday.
So the eleventh is a Friday.
Yeah.
Eleventh is a Friday. So are we good with the eleven? You cannot do the eleven.
I can, I can.
Okay, okay, so we're got a consensus, eleven. All hands are up and thumbs up. We're going with the eleventh, alright? You have a question? Okay.
I was wondering if we could go a Friday a little later though, again for the Omicron issue. No?
We want very much. Hands-on, interactive day. So we would try to start a little bit early. Councilwoman Hopkins, what do you mean? Um, what is your preference for that, uh, later on in the?
I meant like, not later in the day, I mean later in the month, like the eighteenth. I, I just feel like the further we move away from COVID, the better off we'll be.
Oh, okay.
Where is it going?
Alright.
It's not going anywhere.
Mm-mm, nope.
So this is what we'll do. We got a consensus on the eleven, right? We gotta check where we are as a city and COVID status. Based on that information, we'll make that decision because that'll be closer to when we'll have a council meeting. Of whether we would do it in person versus virtual. Is that good with everyone?
Well, so there's another factor here and we haven't discussed it, but if we plan on having this retreat, like where we've had it in the past. Have, have y'all already made sure that these days are available? Cause that could have been reason why they picked those two initial dates.
And, and that is, we were going to actually go to the GMA offices and we did hold. The currently, the eleventh and the thirty-first is being held for us.
Come over, we need to do the process again. Send it out to everybody. Everybody have a end of week response time with the other two days. Because if we pick these days and then they're not there, we're gonna have to do this process over again. You see what I'm saying?
Oh, no. We, we do have those dates being held for us as we speak.
Not the eleven and the twenty, not the eleven and the thirty-first, the proposed date of the eighteenth or the twenty-fifth, because they want to do it further.
No, no, the eighteenth is not happening.
Twenty-fifth because that's the last Friday of the month.
So what other Friday do we have in March? If they can't. She just said eighteen is not happening, so.
Right, but I'm. We already said the, we already agreed on the eleven. I thought everyone said the eleventh was fine.
Laura said that she wanted to push it back. Is that not what she said?
It, it's not critical, I'm just, I'll be honest, I ain't getting in a closed room with a whole bunch of people if Omicron is still like surging.
It's just us.
We, we don't have to make this decision tonight, I don't think.
Okay.
So the biggest thing is, we're just saying the date, right? The date is the eleven. If we see a situation where it does not make sense in terms of us physically being there, then we have to do it virtual.
And I can do any day of the week, but I cannot do Thursday. No Thursday.
It looks like we're set for the eleventh and we'll just decide what it will look like a month from now.
That allows us to move forward, thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward with the eleven, okay? And thank you all. And again, we will make sure because technically we said we're in emergency. So, you know, we, we'd have to go through all that process in terms of us meeting in person, right? Okay, so with that, um, did you want to discuss any additional items for the agenda? Or would you like to submit those and then we can follow up?
We can email, we can email correspond on the agenda items, I believe that's better.
Can't hear.
Any other comments? For this one?
Yes, Mr. Metford.
Mr. Metford.
Uh, yes, so I just wanted to say that ever how you choose to hold what is safest for, uh, everybody. Um, make sure that, uh, the public is still able to access either be a video. Um, some sort to watch. I actually do attend these. Usually I, I work, uh, in the background and listen to you guys discuss. And it's always such a great way to see how my council works. I implore everybody who's listening, who's never watched one of these, uh, meetings. It's, it's, it's really great to see how the council works together. It's a great opportunity. Um, but especially in COVID times, I'll be watching via Zoom no matter what. Uh, so, and actually, I tried to watch the last year's video on the website today, but couldn't, the website link is broken. So we need to fix that, because I wanted to see what was discussed last year to compare where we were at for this year. Um, but yeah, just make sure, test whatever, whatever, wherever you're gonna be at, just make sure that it is accessible to the public, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Metford. And Ms. Cal Wee, did we have any other comments?
No more comments tonight, Madam Mayor.
So with that being said, we have the date for the retreat. For this one, um. This can be more of a, uh, for information purposes versus us having to vote on this one. And so this one does not need to be, um, added to the agenda. Is that okay? Or would you like to vote on the, okay, we'll just do it that way. So we, we all agreed, so. Item M was for discussion purposes as stated and we all concurred that we would have the March eleventh, um, retreat. Okay, with that being said, anything else?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, yes.
I wanted to ask Ms. Cal Wee if we're at a remote location, like a GMA location, would that Zoom option still be available?
Yes, there is access.
Okay. Okay.
They have a wonderful conference room.
Okay. Quite spacious and it has a lot of, uh, in terms of technology, so it is very. Um, accommodating for what we need to do to be inclusive for our community if we so choose to use it.
Resources are there as well for us to reach out and for them to give us a little bit of information.
Okay. If there is no other discussion on this particular agenda item, we can adjourn the meeting for the work session. All in favor of the adjournment of the meeting? A meeting is adjourned and next week, we look forward to seeing you coming back for this wonderful consent agenda. That we're gonna have for efficiency sake. Um, I want to thank again the council and the city manager and staff for your assistance and you, the public, for your participation. And with that, we'll say good night. Thank you all.
Good night, guys.